Is there anything in here that is not in here?
Okay, we're going to call to order the ninth 2021 Committee of the Whole. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I have a motion for that. Okay, I have a motion from Ms. Waters. Do I have a second? Thank you. Reverend Mack, any discussion? All those in favor? Julie, got it set up to vote what kind of thing? Okay, and we have, I think, Ms. Coakley, Ms. Green, and Ms. Herterick via Zoom. So are you guys on board docs and voting that way, or do I need to call for a voice vote?
I'm on board docs, but I'm waiting for the vote to come up.
I'm on the board docs and waiting as well.
All right. Okay, we're going to do a voice vote on this one, but I know now you all are. So all in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Close, the motion passes. The next item on the agenda is our annual reports from our constituent board. Exciting. So as you know, we have a policy that asks the constituent boards to present to the county board once a year. Some years we've done that and some years we haven't. Last year was because of COVID, but this year we are. So I think we're going to start with the D1 board and our, the presentations are in board docs, but they will be up here too. So are we going to start with Reverend Milligan? Welcome.
Thank you, and good afternoon. My name is Reverend E.J. Milligan, and I'm the vice chair of our District One Constituent School Board. And on behalf of Mr. Colliton and the other members of the School Board of D1, I certainly am honored to present to you this afternoon our annual report. Of course, you do already know the responsibilities of the constituent school board. And one of the main things that we are most concerned about is to make sure that we are providing the educational opportunities for our scholars that are a part of the District One schools. The District One School Board did have some concerns this year. Those concerns were voiced at our meetings. And one of the main concern that we have is communication, communication with the Charleston County School Board. As elected officials, we are the members of District One. We feel that communication between us and the Charleston County School Board makes an efficient operation, and we feel that we are a part of this efficient operation. So we are hoping that our communication between our board and the Charleston County School Board will be much more improved as we continue in our progress. One of the concerns that were pointed out was the usage of McLennanville Middle School by Netflix to film a show there that we were unaware of. The sale of the property of 2.87 acres of property that was sold across the street from the main campus of Laken High School. We were not aware of that until the purchase was done. And then there was also an issue at the Lucy Beckham School where there was displays of Trump flags and Trump hats, which turned into a big discussion and argument that we were not made aware of. And there was a very recent issue of one of our students from St. James Santie that was just transitioning to Wando High School, a member of the ROTC. And she was, had a brazen exchange of racial exchanges at this volunteer event. So these are issues that we are very concerned with. We are definitely concerned with the students of District One, all of the students actually of Charleston County School. And we would like very much for our students to not only get along, but for the boards to also be in communication with one another. We have some updates from District One Constituent School Board. We are excited that Charleston County School Board is now in the process of acquiring 100 acre parcel of land to build our new school for the Andor and McLennanville area. The purchase of that land is actually where my grandparents actually attended school there in a one-room schoolhouse. So we are grateful and we are definitely excited. Meetings have been held. We've had our first reading, the second and third reading are August 31st and September 14th respectively. I am very excited. I want to say to this board, thank you so very much for your work. And we are looking forward to doing whatever we need to do to make that possible. We've had some achievements this year. We elected two board members, two newly elected members, Ms. Fessine and Ms. Simpson. Wonderful additions to the District One Constituent Board. I got married this year. Woo woo!
Yay!
My new name is Milligan, and I'm very, very excited about that. We have, we've also attended a virtual discipline training that we were definitely appreciative of that information. The Charles, the achievements for St. James Elementary School, St. James Middle Elementary. St. James was a monthly food drive for distribution for communities of Andor and McLennanville. St. James also, one of our teachers, Ms. Bennett, she's the technology education teacher there. She was able to obtain grants for these Abai robots that are helping our students in their expansion of their education. We are grateful for those achievements. Our Head Start program, we had some issues there, and we, those issues were addressed in our school board meeting, and we are so grateful that we have now Ms. Foxworth working with us. She is the executive director and early childhood school readiness program. And in her dual role, she has been great in helping us to deal with some of the issues at our Head Start program out at St. James Santie. Under her leadership, we have changes in our curriculum, communication between teacher and administration has improved. She has acquired a five-year grant that is wonderful for the incentives for new hires and new compensation plan. But she is definitely an asset to us in District One. Thank you so much, Ms. Foxworth. Student transfer and attendance zone concerns. At current, we have 338 students that reside in District One. And at current, we have 227 students that are attending St. James Santie Middle School. And 111 of those students that live in the district but are currently attending school outside of the district. Our goal is to make sure that we decrease those persons that are transferring from our schools. Of course, at this current time, we don't have a high school, but we are hoping that with the upcoming school that we won't be having, that we will decrease those transfers as we do the best that we can through the school board to provide them the opportunities in Andor that are provided in other areas. District One students' discipline and appeal concerns. We did not have any hearings this school year, but we do know of some hearings that had occurred with our District One students in other districts. However, we were not made aware so that we might be able to attend or even to advise for our students that were facing those disciplines or appeals. We're just asking as a school board members, as part of the elected body, that we be considered for students from District One. We are concerned about our students from District One. We want the best for them. And I'm sure you want the best for them as well, but we'd just like to be a part of what is going on as we are an integral part of the Charleston County School District. Amen? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Amen, amen. No, there'd be a prayer call.
So we just, we just want you to know that we're excited, that we love our students, and we want them to have the very, very best. Strategic recommendation. All transfers should be limited, of course, once we have our school, should be limited for those participants in education that are absolutely necessary for transfer. District One and District Two school boards will work together to establish the zoning for the, to populate our new school out in Andor. We are looking forward to working with District One's, the District One and District Two working together along with Charleston County School Board to make sure that this joint effort is one that will provide greater opportunities for our children in Andor and McLennanville and those that will attend from outside of our district. All student discipline hearings, we would like to be made aware of those hearings, especially those that are concerning the students of District One. We do know the parents and we do know the students. And so we may be able to have somewhat of an influence on what is going on and how they are approaching their lives as they continue their education. District One and the District One School Board would take a very keen interest in the redistricting and the rezoning for our school. We do appreciate, as I said earlier, these efforts that are made by Charleston County School Board. Thank you so very much, and I'm excited, I'm excited, and I'm very excited that we will have a new school out in our area. We look forward to working with you in any way that we can. This ends my presentation for this annual report, and I want to say thank you so very much for allowing me to do so. God bless you all.
Thank you, and congratulations on the exciting things that have happened in your life this year. That was super helpful. Okay. Next on our agenda is District Four, Cooper River, is Ms. Carla Gadsden.
Well, that's what it is.
Oh, I didn't see that.
So we're, so we're going on, in case anybody asks, because I was just asked, we're going on the order that's on the agenda, which I think is accommodating everybody's head. So you have the floor.
Well, good afternoon. My name is Carla Gadsden. I am the newly selected chairperson of District Four. So we're just going to go ahead. Our members are Ms. LaLa File, who is our vice chair, Reverend Chris Collins, Michael Garnett, Lorena Jordan, Erica Smith, and John Wilson. So the purpose of our board is to assign to non-magnet, excuse me, to assign students to non-magnetic local schools in the constituent district subject to appeal to the CCSD Board of Trustees to consider and determine student transfers requests subject to appeal to the CCSD Board of Trustees also, to hear and decide students' discipline appeals. Again, subject to appeal to the CCSD Board of Trustees and make annual recommendations. And that's why we're here. So our student transfer concern, just one, and I'm going to be short with you. District Four parents are requesting transfers because they are hesitant and the administrators, faculty, and staff of their own school. Next slide would be attendance zone concerns, which is the Arby-Stall High School's overcapacity versus North Charleston High School, which is undercapacity, defining the attendance. Next, we defined the attendance zoning lines for Honey Park, Lambs, and Pepper Hill Elementary School. Next slide, we'll go into our student discipline appeal concerns. We feel that is the administrator's responsibility to be unbiased to the students when determining discipline decisions. Also, school administrators are appealing the constituent board's discipline hearing decision before they have received their hearing letter. And then we'll move on to our strategic recommendations. Allow transfer requests for hardships and employees only during an attendance rezoning period. Second one we have is equal educational opportunities in school will reduce the amount of student transfers. Re-recommend using the SFR funds for this. Ensuring that there are clear and defined attendance lines within communities. Next is establishing a meticulous process when administrators and parents decide to appeal a board hearing decision. The current policy in place is school administrators and parents can appeal the constituent board's decision within 10 days of the hearing decision letter date. All appeal letters are, appeal letters are submitted through the US mail. Our proposed policy is school administrators and parents can appeal the constituent board's decision in 10 business or 10 calendar days, whichever you decide, of the hearing decision letter, being able to submit an appeal letter by an electronic method. It is mandatory to submit a copy of the discipline hearing letter with your appeal letter to make sure the administrator or parent does not have an unfair advantage. And the last one is to ensure that the discipline consequences are fair regardless of school, the student attempts. And that is it.
Thank you very much. That was a great presentation. All right, next is District Three, James Island, Ms. Katie Callaway.
Hi.
Hello.
Yeah.
I'm Katie Callaway. I chair the District Three Constituent Board. Thank you for having us here today to present. I also want to give a huge thank you to my fellow board members. We, as you know, are volunteers, and we have all made a great commitment to our students on James Island, and we are super proud of the work that we've done and the model of communication that we have exemplified for the rest of our community in our board. We work real well together and value each other's opinions, and it's been a huge success, and I'm very grateful for this opportunity. Um, let's see, so in going through our annual report, you're well aware of the responsibilities, so if we can go straight to the student transfer concerns. Really, the onus of this one is on the D3 board. It is my goal to align our decisions more clearly with the district policies so that we don't have a whole lot of referrals back to you all so that when we make the decision, we're on the right track. In order to do that, we do have some things that we would love to see clarified. And we have made a commitment to constantly review the policies before we make transfer decisions, to be able to discuss them, align our language with that at the district, and be able to hopefully rely on our decision to be the final one, making your lives easier, and then, of course, the lives of our students and parents easier as well. Moving on to attendance zone concerns, this is a big one for us. We are looking at rezoning during the next school year, hopefully to have those decisions in place by next summer for the 22, 23 school year, which is kind of hard to imagine. We have, in our small district, Murray-Lisane Elementary, which is a partial magnet. As you all may or may not be aware, they have hundreds of students on their waiting list. They have trouble controlling the sizes of their classrooms as a partial magnet. And we would love to take a look at that structure and determine if it's still the best structure going forward. We've had lots and lots of parental input on that. I've spoken at length with the principal there. I'm not sure what the clear path is, if there is a clear path, but I do think that in the upcoming year, when we're talking about rezoning, that that's something that we would like to be able to take a look at as well. We do have quite a few students that, that want to transfer out of Murray-Lisane. Obviously, we take those because it is a partial magnet. But it gets pretty complicated when Principal Wallace is trying to fill classrooms, and then people move into the zone, and they automatically have a spot. It's been a super, super tricky thing for a couple of years. Murray-Lisane's challenges seem to never end. But we hope to address that in the coming school year. And we've already sort of implemented that process. I've spoke to the, the planning office, and we hope to get those meetings underway here shortly. Um, moving on to discipline concerns, this one is a big one for us. We, this past year with COVID, we haven't had a whole lot of discipline cases. The prior year, we had quite a few, and the board found itself in many positions of not really having the tools to address the issues with the students. Most of the discipline issues that we're seeing stem from mental health, social, emotional learning issues, things that we do not have tools to address. Oftentimes, sending those students to Liberty Hill or Turning Leaf creates more barriers, does not address their problem. We see those students coming back again and again. We don't want that. Again, looking for help from the Consolidated Board on how we can best address this moving forward. On James Island, we tend to look at discipline issues through a lens of safety for our entire community, not just the students in the classroom. We've had cases where the board itself has felt threatened by parents who have attended hearings. We've had cases where we know that we are sending children back to the classroom when that child has continued issues and will continue negative behavior, but we don't have the tools to address it. It is my hope that the district will take a really long look at being able to identify SEL and mental health concerns in the classroom before they become disruptive behaviors. What are the steps that we can take to mitigate that before it becomes a problem? And how can we actually solve these problems? As opposed to just addressing with punitive circumstances, the bad behavior itself. I think that we're learning a lot about mental health in students. Obviously, this is the year for SEL. We recognize the need there. We would love to see a greater investment in, in school resources and then greater direction on how our board can help mitigate those cases. And, and then I think the last thing that I really wanted to address in strategic recommendations is, and this is a big one because everyone talks about it, but it's communication. It's a tricky one, but here's where I make my plug for constituent school boards. We are the boots on the ground in our neighborhoods. I meet my constituents every day, in the grocery store, at church, at school, standing in line to get a COVID shot. I'm talking to my constituents every day. I am in those schools. My fellow board members have children in those schools. We're there every day. We hear these concerns. Parents on James Island call our constituent board members all the time, multiple times a day, addressing concerns. They have, they don't understand things. They need clarity. They don't know what to do. I would urge the Consolidated Board to take advantage of the system that you already have in place to help communicate with the greater neighborhoods in Charleston County. We would love to have clarity of information so that we can pass that along to our parents in an informal, casual way, which is how you build trust among your constituents. I think that, that parents on James Island are very leery of school district decisions. They're not particularly trusting. They've had a hard time and struggled to understand policies and decisions that are made. The constituent board can help with that, but we need to have the guidance and the information so that we can facilitate those conversations with our stakeholders. As I said earlier, our board does a great job of communicating amongst ourselves and with our parents. I would love to have the support of the school district in going forward and be able to expand on those relationships, enhance the communication across the district, and work more closely with the school board to achieve our mutual goals. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you very much. Next is Mulberry District Two, East Cooper, Ms. Pamela Juwan-Goldman, Chair.
Good afternoon, Dr. Postlethwaite, Board of Trustees and CCSD staff. I'm Pamela Juwan-Goldman. I'm the board chair for D2. I'm pleased to report that D2, which consists of Mount Pleasant, Sullivan's Island, and Isle of Palms, offers our 15,000-plus students, some of the best schools in the district, thanks to forward-thinking principles, dedicated teachers, involved parents, and the support of everyone in this room. It is the job of the constituent board to listen, record, and report on the ways to make processes run a little smoother in the areas of transfers, discipline hearings, rezoning, and the overall well-being of the district. In our report, we detail some of the ways we believe the transfer policy could be a little more transparent and user-friendly for families who are making time-sensitive decisions about school choice. We suggest minor timeline adjustments and telling parents immediately after direct placement, for example, versus waiting for lottery results. Additionally, we need to make it clear on the transfer portal that if a child is placed on a waitlist, that decision cannot be appealed for direct placement consideration. The CCSD admin support spends undue amounts of time dealing with this issue in particular. We had over 300 transfer requests combined between April and the June windows. That is roughly 2% of our school-aged population in D2. Half of those were for Lucy Beckham High School alone. It is our position that the current JFABC policy is outdated for districts that see unusually high transfer activities, such as ours, and needs to evolve. If this county board wants to promote students attending their neighborhood school, then hardships such as my job or aftercare is closer to one school than another, which, by the way, does not require any proof, is simply not applicable when some of these schools are often less than five miles away from each other. Another example is families choosing one school over another because of a specific class or activity offered, when, again, there is absolutely no way to check if the student will ever enroll in those classes once accepted. Mount Pleasant is the fourth-largest municipality in South Carolina, approaching 95,000 residents. We believe our 10-day numbers will validate this unprecedented growth. North Mount Pleasant in particular is an issue of great concern, largely because of the development, residential developments in process. And as a board, we have presented letter after letter asking for the Carolina Park Elementary School to be funded for an expansion. We rezoned that school last year. We don't want to keep rezoning it every other year, and that is a path we are headed down. It's just not fair to that particular community. An expansion was funded in 2019 and now falls below the line. We respectfully understand that every district in Charleston County is vying for its own funding projects, but we, but we believe that this merits an exceptional level of priority, especially since we are also receiving multiple transfer requests from D1 students in each cycle. Where can we put all these children? While Laurel Hill and Pickney do have a cushion to take more students, we are basically rezoning in student, in-zone students in order to take students out of zone to replace them. Rezoning is a Band-Aid, and we need a permanent solution. Talking of in-growth, in-zone growth alone, Lucy Beckham High School potentially needs to be rezoned next year, and it's only one year old. After a contentious initial zoning we just went through, this is not a challenge anyone is up to. We have to stop approving transfers to a school that cartly has waitlists, sometimes 50 deep for each grade. One solution could be to approve out-of-district transfers that meet criteria to another school in the district, in our case, Wando. Giving the board the flexibility will present an optimal solution to transfer requests from other districts. Discipline hearings. Our recommendations are as follows. We need more mental health support solutions for our children. I echo what the board chair for District Three said. Often, the options for placement do not fit the needs of the child. We realize a pandemic might have upended some plans for more programs, and we applaud the DAP parent workshops that have been offered this year. We need mandatory workshops for parents, for children, and their parents to attend together to work through issues. Sending a child back to school ill-prepared to tackle mental and behavioral issues is a disservice to the child, their classmates, and the school staff. D2 is in full support of restorative practices and would love to put that in practice to solve any fighting issues that exist sometimes within Wando's student, student body. To relieve the number of cases we get for backpack search offenders, the D2 board would like to recommend that CCSD implement a district-wide program to ensure all students are aware of what is in the school code of conduct. We know we all get them, but does any of them actually read it? For example, maybe we could have a mandatory reading or quiz on the material in the book, in the booklet during a homeroom period. Additionally, our board would like to recommend that out-of-school suspension for a first-time offender who is otherwise a great student for a backpack violation be reduced from two, five days to two days. The D2 board would also like to recommend that CCSD offer these mandatory workshops for district students. Something like Be Kind, a workshop for middle school students to address cultural awareness and inclusivity. Something like Be Kind, a workshop for middle school students to address cultural awareness and inclusivity; and Be Social, a workshop for all fifth-grade students and parents to attend on navigating social media and cyber-related issues. Lastly, in the interest of the number of students in District Two and the 2020 census, we respectfully ask if we could be notified as to the process in which we could potentially add two more seats to our board, which currently consists of only five members. I would like to thank everyone here for the privilege to have insight and to have insightful and open, open communication. It is a privilege to serve on the constituent school board alongside my fellow board members and other district board chairs, a few of whom I've had the pleasure to spend some time with. And of course, as always, a special thank you to Ms. Tashiba Champagne and Ms. Stephanie Skinner, who are invaluable resources and make us all look good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is District Nine, which is St. John's area, Ms. Monica Smith, Chair. We are actually, I know lightning's gonna strike me. We're running ahead, so maybe she's not here yet. So I think we're okay to go, and we can come back if she gets here, to do District Ten, St. Andrews, Mr. Rodney Lewis, Chair. Always online, okay.
Yes.
Are you online?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great, then we'll let you go next.
Okay, good evening, everyone. And greetings from the District Ten School Board. Let me make sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, all right. Just, just to be brief from District Ten, we appreciate the support that we get from the district. We truly appreciate our liaisons and Ms. Tashiba Champagne, who is fabulous. Some of the concerns that we may have from our district, one of the things we were looking at this year is the concern about the published criteria and the selection for the process for our students coming into District Ten for the Scholars Program. One of the things that we would like to see, that criteria, because we had some issues this year with transfers coming in and not being sure if these transfers were coming in just for this Scholars Program, because we do have a criteria for, for, for bringing in transfers. So there's a little confusion there. If we can make sure that is cleared up and we get more information on that program, that would be truly appreciated. My second piece would be the attendance zone concerns. Right now, we, we, we would like to have an update on the Ashley River Attendance Zone, how that is working, the numbers there. And we are eagerly awaiting an update on the sixth-grade academy, how that is working. What's the future for the sixth-grade academy? All the information that I've received from parents and staffing is that this program is working wonderfully. Ms. Porter is doing a great job there, and we just want to see this thing continue so it can be a model for other districts. Our next concern would be the student discipline appeals. One of the things that we've been looking at, we get a lot of packets that come in that we feel are not complete. There's some things that need to be in the packets for us to be able to make a decision on the kids that come before us. And a lot of it can be handled at the school level, that when they put these packets together, even, even before it goes to TPA, all that information is there. Because sometimes those cases shouldn't have to come to us, but can be handled at the school. But we want to make sure that all of that information is put in there at the school level, so even when it goes to the Office of Student Placement, they'll know that it does not need to come to the board, or it does. That's been some of our concerns over the last couple of years. Strategies and recommend, and recommendations. What we would like to see, and I've asked for this a few times, just a little better communication between the district and the constituent boards. When there is a project or anything that's getting ready to be done in our district, we would like to know before the public knows. Because if it comes out and we're being asked questions by our constituents and we have no idea what it is, it makes us look real bad. If we could have, and I believe we have three representatives for District Ten on the, on the county board, if they could just take the time and come and visit the District Ten Board, you know, we've been doing it virtually for the last year, but even if they came on virtually, hopefully in this coming year, come to our meeting and they're able to sit and discuss with us what's going on and we can get a better feel of how they should be representing us on the county board, that would go a long way for what we do on the constituent level. The other thing, you know, I've realized that we sit in on all the interviews for principals, at least I sit in on all the interviews for the principals in District Ten, and I believe over the years, we have done a wonderful job of selecting principals. We just had a great principal retire, Ms. Cario, from St. Andrews, and I think we just selected a wonderful principal to take her place. If we are looking for our schools to go to the next level, and I don't begrudge anybody a promotion or moving up in the district, but if we can keep our principals at these schools, because they're doing a great job, maybe reward them at the school that they're at, other than a promotion and us starting all over again, that would make for a great push for our schools to reach the excellent level that we're looking for. Again, I always say, communication is the key for the district and the constituent boards. I thank you very much for this opportunity. And you know, my door is always open. If there's anything I need to know, I appreciate a phone call or an email.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lewis. Next on our agenda is District Twenty, the Peninsula, is Diana Yarvera, Chair.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you so much, Dr. Postal Weight, and Reverend Mack, and all the board members and staff for giving us this opportunity to come to you. We really, I know, all of our board members who are listed here helped participate in this report and putting it together over a series of meetings, and so we appreciate the opportunity to share with you our concerns that we see. So I will start with our student transfer concerns, since you already know our responsibilities. District Twenty receives a fairly low amount of transfer requests, especially in comparison with other districts. You can see most years, we don't even break 10 transfer requests per year. Our board members feel that the application should include some more information. I know I heard that from other board members of other constituent boards. Our board members would like to see grades, disciplined report, as well as employment verification. We see a lot of transfers for employment purposes, and there's no, you know, they just say they work near the school. There's no more proof that is provided. So that's all of our transfer requests. We do have several important and specific attendance zone concerns that I would like to point out to you. Unlike some of the other areas of the county that are growing rapidly and have more students and they know what they need to do with, the Peninsula of Charleston has almost no growth in school-aged children. In fact, I would say, if anywhere, we're shrinking or just sort of staying steady where we are, we're losing families on the peninsula. And I'm sure you're aware that that is because of the dynamics of housing on the peninsula, as well as, you know, a lack of space to build new family housing. The housing that is being developed is not for families. And you can see that in the projected enrollment that we receive from the Planning and Real Estate Department here at CCSD that our numbers are not projected to grow in the future years. Because of this, we are the third smallest constituent district in CCSD, behind the rural areas of District Twenty-three and District One. Our live-in count is too small to properly support our middle and high school so that they can offer a robust academic and extracurricular programs. If you look at the most recent Live-Attend report, you will see that we have 478 high school students living on the peninsula. That's it, 478. That's from my understanding of the funding for high schools. That's not enough students to support a robust, full academic and extracurricular high school. So we would like, that is beyond our powers to do anything about. That is something the district or the county board would have to decide how they're going to address that. We're not going to grow more students, and we can't, we can't rezone our way out of it within District Twenty. I would suggest that county as a whole needs to be looked at to address that issue. We note that residents with school-aged children move away from the peninsula often or don't, or do not move to the peninsula because of poorly performing schools with less amenities, fewer extracurriculars, lower expectations, and fewer opportunities that are offered in schools over the bridge. We are concerned in the future that there are, with the new redrawn single-member districts for the county board, that District Twenty will no longer have any representation on the board. We are currently broken up into four county council seats. So that would mean that our representative on the county board, but we would only be a small little portion of whatever their district is, and that will, again, water down any influence we have on the county board or to have our voices heard. And our biggest concern is that the education offered in our attendance zone is not equitable with other areas. Our students don't have the same opportunities for programming that students in other areas do have, and we think that needs to be addressed. So for our student discipline appeal concerns, we do note low standards and expectations for many of our students in our schools when we see the discipline reports. Includes poor attendance, sleeping, phones are a constant issue that we see. And we always see a correlation between discipline issues with students and below-grade-level reading scores. I will echo what some of our other board chairs also said, that the students in our discipline hearing are not receiving the mental health supports that they need to be successful at school. Our administrators are often telling us that they're giving, you know, the students that we see, they're maxing out on what they can offer them for mental health, and it's just not enough to meet the needs of what those students have or the families have. So, mental health, mental health. And then also incomplete forms, especially the teacher checklist. A lot of our board members were concerned that those are often left un, unfilled out, especially the teacher comments, and that's one way that we have to understand what's happening inside the classroom. So for our strategic recommendations, we would ask that the board allow District Twenty some immediate relief by being able to use middle and high schools, like in Mount Pleasant and West Ashley, where programming and educational opportunities are offered that are not offered on the peninsula. We would also ask you to review the causes for low enrollment at our middle and high schools. Look at why this is actually happening and create a plan that you can act on quickly. I have lived on the peninsula for over 20 years, and very little has changed as far as schools and what is being offered for our students. We ask that you improve teacher training with mandatory social-emotional training with a program like Responsive Classroom. We also ask that you provide racial equity training to raise the standards and improve the learning environment for our students. I'm gonna skip down to the next one, just because it goes along with that. We ask that you provide LGBTQ plus sensitivity training and install safe space signage to all CCSD buildings. Again, that's to improve the learning environment for all of our students. You must invest heavily to train teachers in research and phonics-based reading programs. As I said before, a lot of our discipline hearings, we see students with very low reading scores, and the correlation there is hard to miss. And we need to find a way to raise expectations in academics and student behavior in our schools. Change the mindset of, that our students can't do that, they can. And we ask you to use those SR3 funds to increase the mental health services, the reading intervention staff, and additional staff to support the learning environment. We have seen a lot of money come into our schools, and we, a lot of our board members are skeptical that this money will be used properly or in a way that's effective, and want to know how will you make sure that this money is not wasted and it actually provides the outcomes that we are hoping for. I will say, since I spoke so quickly, that we do want to say we are thankful for some improvements. We're happy to have Stoney Field off this list. We've had it on there for many years, but we are appreciative that that is coming to completion. And I also do want to thank Tashiba Champagne and Miss Gandy for always being so supportive and helpful to us. And we would like to see our constituent board used in a way that can be helpful to our community. We do know what's going on. We hear from parents and families all the time, and so we would like to be a part of that conversation to look at some of these issues that we've brought to you on the strategic recommendations. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is District Twenty-three, St. Paul's area, Reverend Dr. Arthur Holmes, Chair.
Good afternoon to each and every one of you. We're so grateful to make this report on behalf of the St. Paul's Constituent District Twenty-three. We do ask, I serve as your chair, chairman, we do ask that you keep our vice chairperson, Mrs. Josephine Matthews, in our thoughts and prayers for her daughter, passed unexpectedly on yesterday. So we ask that you please keep that family in your prayers as she goes through this trial of arrangement. Our district responsibilities, you are already aware of those things, and so we just ask that you continue to support us as we move forward in the efforts to get those things done. With our student transfer concerns, we would just like to say that our number of student transfers, it was a bit encouraging this year. We had more students wanting to be transferred into the district at two of our schools than previous years. And those two schools were E.B. Ellington Elementary and then Jane Edwards. And so we would like to thank those students and those families for thinking enough of our schools to transfer those students in. However, we would ask that you please continue to look at more ways of making our schools more inviting and more competitive. As some of our smaller constituent districts have already stated, we need to make the curriculum more robust and the opportunities more challenging so that our students would want to stay and not have to go to other places. And for those students who have left District Twenty-three, that they will be willing to return to District Twenty-three because of the opportunities and the challenges. Attendance Zone Concerns, we looked at the current zoning for our two elementary schools, and neither of our schools have reached capacity. Based on your projection for the 21, 22 school enrollment, we still have room to accommodate our students in their best interest right where they are located. However, we want you to keep in mind that our communities, if you've not heard, in the area of Ravenel, also in the area of what the section calls Sugar Hill, and on Edisto, our communities are continuing to grow, and we may have to revisit this area, this concern, a little bit later. But please, please take that into concern. And I feel that it's, as our elementary schools improve with enrollment, if we have that middle school and high school kind of setup, we will be able to retain our students. Also, we ask, I think, and we, the board felt that it was a very, very poor job in informing our parents, the offerings of West Ashley Center for Advanced Studies, and in the miscommunications of our parents. Some of our parents wanted the students to be transferred. But I think if we are educating our parents, and when I say educating, if the communication between the board and the constituent board would let them know that they can remain at Baptiston High School and still take classes at the center, and that will reduce, minimize the number of transfers, because the programs will be offered at the school and they can stay in their, their zones. And we just listed some of the programs that were interesting to our students and those that we wish that we can be informed in. Student discipline appeal concerns. Once again, during the 2021 school year, we had a total of nine discipline hearings that we heard in we had a total of nine discipline hearings that we heard, and none of them were appealed. Thank you so much, or overturned by the Charleston County School Board. We have also noticed a great decrease in the number of discipline hearings. 2019 to 2020, we had 18, and 2021, we had a total of nine. So, thank you, and we are grateful that things are being put in place. And even though things are in place, there is still more work that can be done to support our children, our parents, and our communities. Our strategic recommendations. To continue to develop a strategic plan to assist principals in increasing parental and community involvement. I think sometimes the smaller you are, the more you can divide yourselves. But I believe that if we come together as one, let us continue to work with that and continue to find a strategic plan. We want to say to you, thank you to the district for ensuring us that all of our schools will start this year with not interim principals, but principals. And we want to say to those persons, thank you so very much for that. We want to continue to effectively participate in the community organization in conjunction with our board meetings. So many times, because the community, as stated earlier, the community finds out before the constituent board finds out. It puts us in a situation where it is as if we're not learned or educated enough to know what is going on. And they elect us as their representatives. So, we would just like for the board to make sure that that communication piece is there. We are in the rural area, so therefore, we have a high teacher turnover rate each year. So, we are asking that you please look at incentives for teachers working in rural areas so that we can maintain the great teachers that we're having. This year, it was very difficult for two of our new principals because a lot of the teachers, great teachers, left. And we all know that we do not have as many persons coming into the teaching profession. And so, that's why some of us who are, can go to the house. We're remaining in the system so that we can continue to make a difference. Also, we want to extend the safety for safety reasons at our stadium. We need to make sure that our visitor side is more enclosed, and we need you to take a look at that because part of what brings our community together is the athletic department. And we want to make sure as others come to celebrate with us that they have a sense of security. Also, we had a magnificent barbering program, and we're asking the community, once surveyed by the board, that the cosmetology program be returned as well because it has, for those students who are not going on to post-education, going on to college, it is a career readiness for them. We too greatly need mental counseling and grief assistance for parents and students. Some of the behaviors, I truly believe it's because our parents are not sure how to react, and children will very much mimic that which they see their parents do. So, we're asking that in that area, when you look, as you are repurposing funds and as you are dealing with funds, please make sure that we are given the opportunity to have the mental support that we need from trained professionals. And as I close our report, George Washington Carver once made the quote, "Education is the key to unlock the golden door of freedom. When you do the common things in an uncommon way, you will command the situation of the world and the attention. Where is, where there is no vision, there is no hope." We do ask, as members of the constituent board, District 23, that you continue to empower our schools so that our students can take the common things and do it in an uncommon way so that those can recognize and they can receive the attention and that our students and parents will have hope as we move forward. Again, thank you for this opportunity to present this report on behalf of the Board of Trustees to Constituent District 23. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Just wanting to check and see if Ms. Monica Smith from St. John's, from District 9, Constituent Board is here. If anybody from the District 9 Constituent Board is here and wants to update us. We do have the information in the packet. Okay, board members, just, I wanted to see if anybody had any questions. Dr. Frazier?
I just wanted to let the constituent board chairs know that as policy liaison, I'll be reaching out to you to follow up with some of your concerns. They're related to policy, especially as relates to student transfer policy. So, I look forward to working with you or members of your board. And Ms. Darby will probably be a part of that process as well.
I'd like to say on behalf of the whole board, thank you to Tshiba. And Tshiba, I want you to stand up. Heard a number of the constituent board chairs thanking Tshiba. Each constituent board has an administrative liaison that helps with them, as well as somebody like Carolyn Belcher or Jeff Rowey. But all of them, Tshiba works with all of them. And I, not only is she a great mom, a family person, and works full-time, I can call her at 6:00 or 7:00, and she takes care of whatever needs to be done. So, I just want to thank you. You always have such a good head on your shoulders and help manage us and help us all and will help us on this transfer policy stuff too, I'm sure. So, thank you very much. Okay, so everybody has their packets. In case you missed anything, we took notes. Anything else on the constituent board presentations? Swatters?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank all of the constituent board chairs and vice chairs for coming and sharing your thoughts. It's really helpful to know. And certainly, well, I guess I have to speak for myself. I'm taking your feedback into heart, especially as it pertains to communication and what you all need from us.
Yeah, I should have said that too. I think, on behalf of the entire board, thank y'all so much for the work you do. You are boots on the ground. I think this was probably the best presentation we've ever had, just the way it was organized. It's super helpful. It's clear what the action items are that we need to follow up on. So, thank y'all for the time that you spend. We know how hard it is. We certainly do. So, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay, Ms. Coakley, but did you have your hands up? And then I'll get to Dr. Frazier. Hold on one second. Ms. Coakley, did you have a comment? Oh, hold on. Yeah, you're still muted.
Sorry about that. I was trying to take myself off mute. I would just want to, just echo what everybody else said, that this definitely gives us information and insight on what needs to take, take place next. And want to make sure that Rodney Lewis knew that I would definitely be reaching out to make sure that I am interacting and conversating more with the people at D10. So, thank you very much, all of you all, for the information.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Frazier?
Yes, I'd like to just echo what the other fellow board members have said. Thank you all so much for sharing so much information with us. I've learned so much about the other districts. And I would just want you to know that we're going to be following up on your concerns. We're here for you. I, myself, have made a commitment to go around and meet with some of you personally. I'd like to thank Reverend Dr. Holmes for bringing a good message from the area that I represent. He always accused me of looking out for District 20, Reverend Holmes. Thank you so much. Thank you all so very much. We really appreciate the information. And in ending my thank you, I'd like to say that I'm constantly hearing from you all that you need the mental health support. And I'm hoping that this board listen so that when we make some decisions about where the S R funds will be spent, that we will take into consideration that you all need the support in mental health. Thank you so very much. You all have a wonderful evening.
Thank y'all very much. The next item on our agenda is public comments. Swatters?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Darby. We do have several in-person comments submitted, and I will wait for a queue from the back of the room that we're ready. Over there, okay. Okay, great. So, I'm going to... So, I'm going to start at the top of the list. There you go. Okay, so the first person that we have is Lynn's Piper Loomis. As she's coming, but we have 30 so far. Given the time slot, we do have to divide evenly. I don't see 30 people in the room, so I think that we would be okay to start with the, just going with the two-minute. Okay, Ms. Loomis?
My name is Lindsay Piper Loomis, and we, the people, are campaigning for U.S. South of District 1 to defend, protect, and preserve the U.S. Constitution, Judeo-Christian values, and America's soul, and the future generations of this nation. Where are the biohazard bins, hazmat suits, goggles, and et cetera for this deadly COVID virus? As I've stated before, we, the people, are against mandatory mask mandates, vaccine mandates, and against inoculation of experimental drugs that are not FDA-approved to our children without parental consent. There is a grab for power and resource gain in this district. I say no to communism, socialism, and Marxism. We, the people, have a majority voice and vote in this nation. Our election was stolen, and you continue to be complicit in the actions of allowing a communist regime to rule through an indoctrination of Hitler ideology or criminal race theory, attempting to silence the voices of our children and their creative minds. You also indoctrinate our children through sex education with materials that host pornography and groom our children for trafficking. The school's role is to educate our student on the U.S. Constitution, the Pledge of Allegiance, civility, arithmetic, history, not the 1619 Project, reading and writing. Our unalienable rights have been endowed to us by the Creator. You have created guidelines in your image and belief. Your power and authority arises from man. You are sadly mistaken. I, Lindsay Piper Loomis, represent the people and children of this district, this state, and this nation. May God pierce your heart for salvation. And we, the people, understand our right to have our taxpayer funds no longer fund your ideology. We will ensure the money is returned to our taxpayers' pockets so that we have school choice and can decide where and how our funds are used in public education. You forget you represent us. There are seats on your board that will be available, and we intend to fill every single one of them with public servants, not dictators, that remember their oath is to the United States Constitution, not to the, not to man or the establishment. God bless this district, this state, and the United States of America.
Thank you for your comments. I just want to give a reminder that this public comment space should pertain to what's happening within the school district. And so, please be mindful of that as you come. Mr. Jim Alderman is next.
Thank you. My name is Jim Alderman. I have custody of a six-year-old granddaughter who's enrolled in first grade in Charleston County.
Mr. Alderman, could you pull the mic closer to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sound better?
Yes.
Better?
I have a six-year-old granddaughter that I have custody of who's enrolled in public schools here. I have another granddaughter who's a rising senior. I have two grandchildren already graduated and one that hasn't started yet. So, I feel like I have a very vested interest on what goes on in the school. And so, basically, I really have a question. I want to know if there is any truth to rumors that I've heard that critical race theory is going to be in any way promoted or talked about in the schools. Also, want to know if we are lifting BLM founders as role models. And then I will have a comment based on that, those questions.
Mr. Alderman, thank you for being here today. We are not unfortunately able to engage in dialogue. This is just to hear your thoughts on certain issues. I will name, though, that this, that's not up on the agenda. That I know of, it's not currently slated to be discussed by the board.
Either one. Thank you. Well, I will go ahead and comment on it with the little bit of time I have left. I think it's fundamentally wrong to judge a person solely on the color of their skin. I believe Black Lives Matter. I have very dear friends who are black. But I believe all lives matter. And I don't, I'm not familiar with all the tenets of either the critical race theory or Black Lives Matter. But what speaks way louder than any words that they have written are their actions. I think it's wrong to set up any kind of role model who is the founder of movements that burn down buildings, destroy property, threaten and intimidate innocent people. And I just hope that that never is an issue in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person we have, the next person we have is Ms. Tara Paula Bicki.
Good afternoon. I'm a concerned parent of a student, and I'm a taxpayer. And I want to voice my opposition to any teaching on critical race theory or promotion of anything that has to do with gender, other than the way we were created. I do not believe politics have any place in our children's education. We need to teach them truth with focus on good Christian values and the freedoms and liberties that our great nation was founded on. I also oppose any mask mandates. It has been proven that masks do not prevent spreading viruses and that it causes a deterioration in the immune system for anyone that wears one for long periods of time. This seems to be opposite of what we would desire. I am also opposed to any forced experimental injection or requirement or done on any school campuses without consent of the parents. It has not been approved by the FDA, and the FDA just stated that they are not requiring it for any employees of the FDA. I also do not support online school. Children need the social interaction. We are created to be in relationship. It is how we grow as people. It was also found that across the board, grades declined by those that continued online schooling. I would like, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. The next person is Wendy Quacken. Ms. Quacken is not here. Ms. Karen DeSosa. Lynn's, okay, I'm not going to read that. Wally Donter. Billy Gates. Jeremy Piper Loomis. Hedy Browner. Terry Sario. Manny Sharp. Tammy Sue Calhoun. Herman Workworth. Trent Truman. Alicia Mendoza. Winona Bellings. Craig Catecart. Joseph Whalen. Ruthie Malro, or Malru. Beth Shondart. Seth Mandel. Jen Dupree. Amanda Ravenel. Thomas Olindo. Suzie Honore. Chad Worlesley. Jade Alderman. Okay. Oh, okay, thank you. Maggie Marlowe. And Eliza Verratti. Oh, you do, thank you. No, please, take your time.
Hi, I'm Dr. Eliza Verratti. I'm a pediatrician and one of the leaders of the American Academy Pediatrics, South Carolina chapter. I'm also a mom of three children in Charleston County. We represent over 750 pediatricians, and we stand united... We represent over 750 pediatricians, and we stand united to speak out on behalf of children, their health, safety, and well-being. We believe it's very important for children to return to school in person, but we want to make sure that that is safe. In May and June, we went weeks without seeing a single coronavirus case in my pediatric office. Our state positivity was down to 2%, and return to school unmasked seemed like a very reasonable possibility. But given the Delta variant surge that has led to nearly 72,000 new COVID infections in children this past week, doubling previous week, in-person learning without universal masking just does not seem like a safe bet. Now nearly one in five sick visits we see in the office is COVID. South Carolina is the third highest in percentage of children with coronavirus, 19.1% of all cases. I'm sure you're aware four high school football teams are now in quarantine due to COVID. On July 18th, the American Academy of Pediatrics put out guidance for safety on returning to school to protect students, teachers, and staff, that all children over the age of two and all adult staff should wear face masks regarding, regardless, I'm sorry, of whether they've been vaccinated or not. CDC and DEHEC has echoed that advice. These are not recommendations based on someone's personal opinion but on science, and we must believe the science. Masks work. Universal masking is one of the best mitigation strategies we have to protect children, teachers, and our community. Vaccines are effective, but unfortunately not available for children under 12, which is a majority of our population. Children are very adaptable and resilient and have adjusted to wearing masks very well. This is a temporary measure until we can keep this surge down. Requiring masks for school attendance is the most equitable way to ensure all children have access to their best in-person education options, the safest way to keep staff safe. It also decreases the bullying between unmasked and masked children.
Ms. Verratti, I'm sorry, but your time, time has ended.
Okay, can I just have a conclusion? I understand that the current bill that we have has made it hard for you, but other school districts around the country haven't done this, and where there are similar bills have been passed. Our job, just like your job, is to protect the children, and I just want you to know that we believe you can do this, and South Carolina's pediatricians all stand behind you. And if you need a list of school districts around the country where they have, um, had the
Ms. Verratti, I'm sorry.
I'm happy to give you that list. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Darby, we did receive written comments, but I'm, I believe that concludes the, the public comment section. The ones that were submitted, they were given to all board members to read and review.
Great, okay, thank you very much. The next item on the
Ms. Darby, would it be possible to take a three to five-minute break?
Yes, if, if, Reverend Mac would say no, but I would say it would be wonderful for us to take a five-minute break, and we can reconvene at 10 till 2. Does that work for everybody? Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody ready to reconvene after our short break? Okay, oh, sorry, we're a little behind. Um, the next item on the agenda, item four, is the superintendent's report. Dr. Postaway?
Thank you, Mrs. Darby. Good afternoon, board members, and those of you who are with us in the audience. We'll start tonight, this afternoon, with the superintendent's report, simply with our back-to-school numbers. Mr. Bregman and his folks rounded up these numbers for us. Right now, the projected number of students is about 44,000, 44,600 and some. As of this morning, we had 26 teacher vacancies, which might sound worrisome to you with school starting next week, but that's actually pretty good for us. We're, we're pleased with that number, which we wish we had none, but there have been years when we've had more. So our teacher vacancies this year are not significantly different from the other, from numbers we've had in other years. We did want to mention that we have 57 teachers starting who are Teach Charleston Fellows. That was a special program we started locally to, to help support and develop people who want to, to enter the teaching field. And then yesterday, we were at a state meeting, and we're complimented on a teacher residency program that we have in collaboration with the College of Charleston. The next slide mentions information that has already been publicly presented. It's a list of our new principals. The majority of the new principals are caused by people who have decided to either retire or pursue other career opportunities. There are an additional four vacancies that were created when principals were accepted in other opportunities in our district. So those that are interim are usually because we were starting to interview late in the year, as you know. People have to sign their contracts with other districts by a certain date in South Carolina, and after that date, it's very difficult to get released from a contract from one district to go to another. So we did have a fairly high 20% leadership turnover, so that creates a lot of opportunity and a lot of hard work. There are four new, three new facilities and one totally renovated, beautiful facility, reopening on time even with COVID challenges, so we compliment our operations folks for delivering West statue Center for Event Studies, the Baptist Hill Career and Technology Education Wing, the D2 Bus Lot, which is a big deal, and the, as I said, beautifully revised Mitchell Elementary. We look forward to walking school board members through those facilities as soon as we can arrange it. The back-to-school updates that were contributed by communications have to do with the Office of Translation Services. As you recall, there was a decision that we were not doing enough to support students who speak other languages when they start school, so that office has been newly created, is up and running. Our Office of Family and Community Engagement have been busy, meeting with parent groups over the summer, planning current and future supports for parents and parent engagement in more authentic ways than has been the case in the past. There are several back-to-school events our communications department is supporting, including yesterday's First Day Festival, which was a huge success held here at the Gilliard and in the, in the field beside the district office. Importantly, our back-to-school hotline will be open beginning, excuse me, a week from today. It will run the 16th through the 20th. Excuse me, from eight in the morning till 4:30 in the afternoon. There will be multiple people manning this hotline so that whenever anyone calls, they'll get an immediate response. And then, as we mentioned, we have several new leaders, so there's been a lot of new leader support. Importantly, now we have two topics that we want to cover in the superintendent's update, the first of which is some discussion on our point of view regarding the safe school restart. So the first slide we have in that section is a summary for the board and public of the latest DEHEC updates. As you notice, a map of states of South Carolina. Forty-four counties have high spread rates right now. There are two that have medium disease activity. Charleston County is high in incident rates per 100,000, in the trend and incident rate increase, and in the percent positive. This creates quite a conundrum for South Carolina school districts. That's outlined on the following slide. We see two provisions of law that are new for us this year, and they're very difficult for people to understand. These were parts of the law that were passed along with the budget. The first is a proviso called 1.108. It prevents school districts from mandating mask-wearing by staff or students or by enforcing mask mandates. And if we do so, we are at risk of losing state funds. So no, no state funds may be used, and the way the funding is, is, is organized at the district level and expended according to budget structures that are established by the state. It's not possible, for example, for any of our salaries to be divided out into so-and-so's paid with local funds and so-and-so's paid with state funds. Those funds are co-mingled to the point that it's not possible to sort them out. So in effect, the mandate keeps us from requiring or enforcing the wearing of face masks by students or by staff. And then the other proviso, 1.103, we wanted to just mention today, is the proviso that financially punishes school districts if more than 5% of the students attend school virtually. That wouldn't be a reason for us not to encourage students to have their, their children, encourage parents to have their children enroll virtually if they feel that that's what's best for their families, but it, it is intended to be cautionary in terms of the numbers of students who attend virtually. So the conundrum is clear. If we follow some of the very, very clear medical advice we're being given, we're out of compliance with a couple of different provisions of the state law. So we know you're going to talk about your policy base covering ADD, and you're going to receive some legal advice, and you're going to talk about that in your special call meeting. So this, we didn't, we didn't want the board to discuss this at this point in time before we receive legal advice, but we did want to call it to your attention. Mr. Burrow is going to cover some other areas of school restart. Mr. Burrow?
Thank you, Dr. Postaway. Next slide, please. So, to keep back one more. You were one step ahead, thanks. So, so from a summary perspective, I did, I did want to point out that we've had a number of recent actions by medical organizations that has led us to review this on an hourly basis to this point. So we're providing you the freshest news possible. We did receive Center for Disease Control guidance back in early July, and DEHEC guidance as late as early last week, middle of last week, along with a document from July 29th. With that guidance, along with the area infection rates that Dr. Postaway had a slide on earlier, on which we are back at roughly the January, February range of this past year as far as the Low Country goes. We've had a number of dialogues with our professionals at DEHEC and MUFC as each of these items has come out. The bottom line is that we will continue to monitor once our protocols are in place, tracking classroom infections if, if they occur during the year, and adjust our, our recommendations accordingly. We'll be turning back on the school-by-school dash We'll be turning back on the school-by-school dashboard here as schools start so that parents can track any COVID cases within their children's schools on, on an individual basis. We'll also update the restart plan once we get through all of the information being provided today. On the next slide, Dr. Postaway already mentioned that we're going to have a legal discussion on masks with the board in executive session coming up in the special call meeting. But I did want to point out the current state of the play, and that's a strongly encouraging of mask-wearing for all students, faculty, and visitors. Once that is finalized, we would obviously provide signage at each of the schools. And also, one of the key elements is to make sure that both our children and our faculty are protected from whether or not they're wearing masks or not, criticizing those, making sure we don't have bullying going on in the schools. We'll be monitoring that very closely. There are a number of exceptions. One is mask mandate on school buses. That is from CDC and in all school clinics and athletic training spaces. That is guidance that we received from, from the State Department of Legal Counsel. Moving from mask to laundry list of other protocols, hitting the wave tops here. We are looking at keeping our seating distance at three foot. Plexiglas, as mentioned, back in June or July, we developed a list of when schools wanted that removed, and that is nearly complete, but we will maintain the three-foot distancing between seats. And certainly, if it's an opportunity to make it greater than three foot, we will most, we will most certainly do that. One of the common questions from the public is what about events? Whether it be athletic events, fine arts events. And right now, we're looking at determining capacity based on three-person pods with three-foot spacing between those pods. This is exactly what we did for a number of the graduation events back in, back in June. From a facility perspective, we continue to maintain some pretty incredible HVAC systems in our schools. We upgraded all of our filters last year, if you recall, more than fifty thousand of them. They're all at nerve thirteen or fourteen. We've extended the runtimes for HVAC units so that we do get four to six hour, four to six fresh air changes per hour per classroom. And I, and I'm not aware of anybody that's getting anything better, better than that. From a cleaning perspective, we're going to maintain the standards we had last year of bathrooms and high-tech services twice a day and our fogging of, of all schools once a week, twenty percent per weeknight. We'll continue to emphasize hand washing while of hand sanitizer distributed to the schools like we did last year. The last item on this list is the continued emphasis on student and athlete cohorting. There, there is some, some sense of relaxation with what has happened with, with COVID. We really need to engage hard on that to keep as many of the same students together as possible so that if there is a positive case issue, we're quarantining the least number of students that we have to. We've already experienced this with a number of athletic teams, and that is one of the common requests from parents of those athletic programs is to cohort as much as possible to minimize the need to quarantine an entire team. We will, we have emphasized that with the athletic directors. We need to emphasize that in our classrooms as well. Page two of two, the protocol. One very recent change related to COVID testing available. We are unable to get a rapid turnaround with saliva testing, which is what we did last year. We can do the mid-terminate testing, which is the nostril swabs. We will do that both for rapid and the PCR results that would go off to a lab to be tested. Ellen Nitz is working through that protocol right now with MUSC to allow for that capability within our, within our schools. She will continue on with the contact tracing program. I did want to remind all board members that Ellen's nurse team was trained last spring by DEHEC. We investigated more than two thousand cases last year. We received positive compliment, complimentary remarks from both MUSC and DEHEC for the work that Ellen and her team have done, being able to turn around the contact tracing in a rapid manner and doing it consistently across the district. So we're very pleased to continue with that effort this year. Quarantining of close contacts, this is a slight change in what we had last year. Last year, we, we've used high-risk sports cases for fourteen days. Both MUSC and DEHEC have recommended that we make, make it fourteen days for all, all close contacts because of the, right now, the inability to mandate, mandate masks. The incubation period for COVID is two to fourteen days. So the shortening of quarantining is prob, is problematic. And so we'd like to maintain that quarantine. This is one of the common comments we get from parents, that they would like to quarantine for less, but we don't think it's in the best interest of the district. We've actually received comments about discrimination against those that haven't been vaccinated, meaning if you're vaccinated, per DEHEC guidelines, you do not need to quarantine if you do not have symptoms. We've had comments from parents that have not had their children vaccinated to say that they're being discriminated because those that are vaccinated come right back without, without the, without the quarantining. So that is a common comment we've received from parents so far. We spent a lot of time on choir, working with our choral directors, and we're prepared to come forward with a recommendation here in which we would allow singing for our middle and high school choirs with six-foot distancing, limiting the time period that they're singing so that we have proper airflow occurring. We're obviously going to encourage masks. We've got HEPA filter units prepared to be installed in all of those schools, which will double the air exchanges within those, within those rooms. And we'll also maintain a volume of less than ninety decibels, which reduces the respiratory particles, droplets that are released by singing in a softer voice. So we're looking at moving ahead with, with choir inside, which is the only remaining activity from the schools that we had not allowed. All right, I think I've covered everything, Dr. Postaway.
Thank you, Mr. Barrow. We know that the board has a lot to consider today, so we are, we have planned to talk a bit about goals. We think the timing for that is off, but we did want to share with you the way we're thinking about cascading the board goals from this table into classrooms and how we want to stay answerable for the board goals. So the overarching goal is the one that is represented by achieve Charleston, and that is that more students from pre-kindergarten through post-secondary are ready in every class, at every level, every grade, every school, every year. That means we have to have really clear readiness measures. We have to know within that band, the sort of band you see on the graph, what readiness looks like. And we had decided as a board three years ago that we would accept South Carolina ready. We would accept MAP scores. We would accept other assessments that have a lexile or quantile equivalency as, as evidence that a student has fallen into a readiness band for their particular grade or developmental level. And that we would, we would be able to talk with parents about whether their students are within the readiness band, not on track or actually exceeding track. And that our response then to the student would be based on what that particular student needs in order to accelerate growth through the readiness band. So we have been working on that now for three years, and we're at this year at the, at the decision point, I'm getting very, very specific. As you know, the state sets the principal and teacher evaluation system and the principals' evaluation system. And for those of us who work here at the district office, even though our evaluations aren't set by the state, for the principals, there are three specific goals. And as we set goals with principals, Dr. Williams, Ms. Simmons, and others who work directly with principals, will be getting those readiness goals at this level of specificity. So this is an example. As they look at the readiness bands for each of their grade levels, they should be able to say, with this level of specificity, this is just an example, one hundred thirty-seven fifth-grade students in my school are currently reading below the readiness band. These are the things I need. This is what I believe will make a difference. These are the inputs I need, the time, the materials, the curriculum, the people. These are the outputs I would observe. This is what students would be doing. So I see more students staying after school. We provide transportation. We've changed into ZERN curriculum or EL and reading or specific high-dose tutoring that's provided by a volunteer or a paid volunteer who knows this particular subject matter. The outcomes then are at the end of the year, how many of those students are now in or above the readiness band? So if we started with, we know exactly how many students were below the readiness band. When we finish the year, we would want to see far fewer than one hundred thirty-seven students not in the readiness band. It's that level of specificity or clarity that we need to be looking at as we drill down to the expenditure of S R three funds. That does not mean that we would not be looking at social and emotional needs, but it's in the context of the academic learning. So what is it that is, is causing the student not to be able to engage? And this also doesn't mean that social and emotional support would be limited to students who are not ready. There, any time that an emotional or mental health problem is getting in the way of a student engaging positively in school, then those kinds of resources would come into play. So I just thought it was important, before we get into this discussion in and of S R funds, that we understand that they have to be differentiated according to school and neighborhood, and they have to be aimed at those students who are currently not performing on or above level or who have, are experiencing difficulty that keeps them from engaging and learning. And that's, that's one of the critical guidelines or guiding principles that we will keep in mind as we move into S R three funding. So we're ready to start our S R three update. Mr. Kennedy and I will cover the first two or three slides. And then Mr. Hamer is going to talk with the board about the rest. Mr. Hamer is the Emergency Relief Funds Coordinator for the district. You've met him before, and you will hear from him tonight. We thought that it was important to start with our commitments. Our next step to the board will be to have our S R three plan ready to submit to you by this coming Monday. It will be primarily, like other districts in the state, looking at which of the fifteen priority areas we are, are targeting and how many millions would go into each one of those areas. But it won't be at the level of specificity for each neighborhood or community. That will come in the detailed work that will be done over the next two or three months, and you'll have those detailed plans by January. So these are the commitments we make. We will listen to feedback. We'll use the next two to three months to continue to extensively involve our community members and ensure that the detailed plan reflects the needs that have been identified by each community. We'll focus on academic recovery. The goal, as you know, or a requirement, is to use twenty percent of the funds on academic recovery. We think that our goal should be to try to, to use up to maybe seventy-five percent of our funding on academic recovery. I don't know that we can meet that goal, but I just want you to know, that's where we're starting as a target. A third commitment would be to identify the severely impacted students, and that includes wraparound services that students need and allocating resources to address the needs of our most severely impacted students. We commit to being open to innovation. If we look over the past twenty to thirty years, our school district and districts across the nation have had a number of interventions. None of them has been able to be sustained at scale. They can be sustained in individual schools, but in terms of an entire district achieving high levels of achievement for all the students in the, in the district and maintaining those high levels of achievement, that is something that has escaped us. So we have to be open to innovation. We commit to engaging community partners in an appropriate way, given their role and their, their, their own capacity to fill gaps that our areas, the school district, doesn't have the best expertise in. We absolutely commit to investing in talent because at the end of the day, what makes a difference for every student is to have a talented teacher with that student and a talented leader in the school. And then finally, of course, we commit to prioritizing health and safety. But because of the foresight, the vision that those who came before us had, the board members and leaders who served this district in the past, our facilities are in really good shape. That penny sales tax has gone a long way to help us. There are few districts of our size that are considered at least partially urban that have the, the, the school facilities that are in the shape that ours are in. So while some of our funds that we need to spend for facility needs, the majority, we will pledge, will go directly to classrooms. There was a question at the end of last week about who could manage the funds or how we make sure that these funds aren't left to a bunch of career bureaucrats to do with as they please. That's a big worry. So Mr. Kennedy has taken some time to just outline some of the, the accounting and monitoring processes, and we've asked him to review that for the board today.
Thank you, Dr. Postaway. So what the slide shows, Dan, is the overall, the overall process of the district receiving the S R funds and spending those funds and getting reimbursed appropriately. The slide shows actually two entities. Actually, there are three organizational entities that are involved in the distribution and the reimbursement for the S R funds, starting with the federal government. So the federal government's Department of Education determines the parameters, how much each state will receive, in particular, federal dollars, in this case, with the S R dollars. The government, the federal government, then notifies the state. The state reviews those parameters, make sure that they understand within those parameters, there are allocation formulas and how to, how, how much dollars get, get allocated to each school district in the state of South Carolina. Once that's done, the state notifies each school, each of the school districts. Then each school district then has to submit a spending plan to the state. I would say unfortunately, there are like three different financial systems that are involved in this process from the state and the, and the school districts. Those processes, those systems, rather, require people that are staff members that are trained. They have limited access, so just like any type of a system that you have nowadays, you have to have access, access codes to get into. So just everybody, not, not just anyone to get access to those systems. So the first process that, process associated with one of the systems then is for the state to submit, excuse me, the school district to submit to the state a spending plan in one of the state's financial systems that we have access, access to. Once that is done, the state reviews the spending plan to make sure that it meets the criteria, each of the criteria, allocation criterias that the federal government established to make sure we have a sufficient level of detail. Once that is, once that is complete, then the school district has to enter into another system, another state system, the budget and the, and the specific plan. So this is separate from the, the plan, the system that's used for the, for the original spending plan. And then, once all of that is done, then the district can begin spending funds. As shown here says that as of H six, H six, the district has not received the funds from the state. So with the S R one funds that we were allocated the spring of last year when the pandemic first hit, we have received most of those funds. So the process there is that the district expends, makes expenditures based on the spending plan. Then, once a quarter, the district then submits a claim to the state for reimbursement for those expenditures. So the claim, the state reviews the claim, make sure there's accuracy, make sure, again, compliance. And then, once that is done, then the, assured, then the state will reimburse us. So only S R one have we gone through that process. The S R two plan was just recently approved by the state, and so we have not submitted an initial claim yet. And certainly, we have not submitted any claims to the state for the S R three since the plan has not been submitted to, to the state, not approved by the state. We are spending money on the S R two, as you, as you're well aware, a lot of the summer learning that we're working on right now. And we will be applying for reimbursement very shortly. And then, the, the last bullet point here on assurances here, all federal dollars are subject to, to audit. And the way that happens with our external audit firm that we engage with, they select a, each year, a federal program to audit. It's called a single audit. Uh, each year, a federal program to audit. It's called a single audit. And um, the the uh, the state as well as the federal government certainly have have indicated. Uh, that there'll be scrutiny of these uh S R dollars. And so I would anticipate uh in the coming years that the. Uh, our external artists will select the S R, S R funding as one of those single audit uh. Uh, processes. And and of course, they will present the results to the audit and finance committee. And then after the audit and finance committee presentation by the external audit firm, they would, they come to the board in a decent amount of time frame and present their results to the floor board. So that I'll turn it over to Mr. Hamer.
Oh, good afternoon, everybody. Um, thank you for your time. I have just a few slides I'd like to use to go over a little bit of what the S R program is about. And perhaps give you some sense of what the next next major steps are. So um, as you know, the allocation is a hundred and sixty three million dollars. Uh, which have to be spent by September of twenty twenty four. One of the stipulations of the grant is that twenty percent of it goes towards or goes to addressing learning loss. Which is the superintendent already pointed out, uh, our plan, once it gets laid out, I think you'll see that. More of this allocation goes for that particular approved activity. But also the requirements are that they should align or expand on our existing academic recovery plan and use words from that in terms of power. We say we're going to. Address learning loss. It should also, within the the law and within the grant, it's also a note, a notification that this should also. Implement programs to address specific student subgroups. And also, uh, as I said, we plan to invest more than twenty percent towards this particular activity of learning loss. The application is due on the twenty fourth. This is a high level uh. Document that just really. Uh, in addition to the prudence that you have to do for applying for a grant. It shows fifteen allowable categories where the funding can go. And these categories are fairly general. Uh, they address mental health, they're just summer school. They address learning losses. We've already talked about they're just facility repairs, those types of things. Uh, but our goal is to make sure that we have a draft ready for review early next week. And a more specific, more detailed maybe strategy that uh we'll use that word for. On these specific programs should be implemented by early next year. I think one of the key things is transparency with how we do these programs. And making sure it's very clear where the money is going and for what output that we're trying to get uh through. Accomplishing this. So still in the design and I have a slide to uh in the back of your back up here where I show you some ideas. Of how we could potentially use some metrics and some dashboards to let. Our our public and ourselves know how the program is for us. It's like this. So what's been done so far? Our strategy and communication department has done a very good job with a comprehensive stakeholder outreach over the last couple of months. Two focus groups of teachers, staff and community leaders. Uh, one hundred and seventy eight telephone surveys, uh, conducted parents, uh, surveys of parents of exceptional, exceptional children. There've been over two hundred in-person surveys at community events, one hundred twenty five, keeping twelve student surveys. Five thousand online surveys which are ongoing and so we're still getting input from that. And then two in-person town hall meetings, which I know some of you have attended uh to uh addressing areas where we got lower response from those other surveys. We've also briefed our principals that they're lead summer conference. And also had some in-person forums with the chamber of commerce and nonprofit representatives. So. A very, very comprehensive outreach for stakeholders, trying to determine as many ideas, uh, plans, thoughts. Uh, needs, requirements that are out there. So we've sorted all that, organized that. And putting that to some form that we can develop our plan, but more so than that, taking that input and developing that more. Specific tactical plan that I talked about that will have a ready for implementation early next year. Well, we developed some preliminary drafts of sections of the plan. Uh, some of the things that are less specific in terms of that from COVID. So we're pretty close to uh having a an initial draft, what we need to submit to the state. I think it's important to note that this has been said in this meeting several times before. Our stakeholder cheat sheet is really consistently centered around six priority areas that I think would be fairly intuitive to you. Underlist of fifteen allowable activities or allowable categories. Most of the input that we've gotten from all of the outlets that I just uh think might have centered around six things. Boy, some students addressing learning loss. Uh, summer learning programs and after school programs, mental health services, educational technology, and improving. I suspect most of our efforts or priorities were going to development programs that. Of course, as I said, there are fifteen categories and we've got input. Programs and recommendations for other categories, but these are the ones that I kind of fleshed out with the ones that uh. So here we get deliverables over the next uh few weeks. Is to have a draft of the applications. Again, the application uh asks you to uh. Identify programs among the fifteen allowable activities and recommended funding that you want to put in there. To meet with a planning team of external stakeholders that you will help us develop this uh along as you go on with this process. And again, to create some easily accessible platforms. Where you just don't have to say, trust me, and it's very clear where the money is going and what's being achieved by the money. And not only that, who is specifically impacted or who is specifically um having a positive effect on how we we spend the money. We plan to have a final draft where you obviously in advance of the twenty fourth. Uh, when it's due and we're submitting our application on time. As I mentioned, I do have. Post, well, let me get to the slide first. So after we get our plan approved. Then that's when those specific programs and specific activities that we're going to assign those categories to. Really get to the work. And so we're going to continue our coordination with teachers and principals and other stakeholders to get those plans in. But then the key words that I use here is that they are targeted. As you've just said, this uh program allows us to go to where most of the need is. Uh, it does not necessarily have to be a blanket that you just have a program that touches everybody the same way. You have the ability. To hone in on exactly where most of the need is and where most of the concerns are. So that's what these plans will do. One of the key things has also been uh integrates best practices across the country. We've sat around a few meetings and listened to. Uh, leaders in other school districts and how they're developing their plan and how they're. Some really good uh ideas from that. Uh, there's also some really ideas that are going on. I mean, there's some successes, but some community programs that I think we should leverage. And of course, no later than early next year, develop that master plan that has a level of specificity that addresses those things. That are targeted and that are really trying to achieve, trying to get down here. I do have one more backup slide. I was talking about the um. Uh, metrics and I think again, having publicly available dashboards and. Things that people can track and say, okay, this is where the money is going. I think this is going to be very key to this. So. Not only building the trust that we want, but just helping ourselves link this specific feedback that we've gotten from. Um, stakeholders to actually dollars being sent. So if you look on the next slide and. You know, this is just an idea and I borrowed this from, uh, or we borrowed this from some dashboards that we've seen other school uh districts working on. Here's an example where you can say, okay, you're, you know, a year and a half ago, this, how much money have you spent and how much money is left to to spend? Uh, you know, we can develop other slides that are more specific about what dollars are spent by individual district. Or uh, we can develop some slides which show for a specific category, we have learning loss, be it uh. Uh, mental health or whatever, exactly how much you're spending in those categories. So I think this is going to be a key part of what we do in managing this program. Uh, not just identifying the activities, not just identifying the programs that we do, but also giving it some level of detail. Here's an idea where you can actually um. So dashboard where you can see, see each district and how much. And the specific program, I think that will be of. Uh, folks who are really paying attention to how this, some components obviously being managed. Of course, this is consumer generated. They say, okay, we need to see. How the money is spent for so and so. After your questions, that's all I have. Our status of what this would be.
Do you want to do questions now on this portion?
Um, that completes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Right, sure. Okay. So do we have any questions from board members on that very. Inclusive, lots of detailed superintendent reports. Everybody in it. Dr. French?
So the, just based on the most recent uh part of the presentation. Would you be uh able to do this for the S R one and S R two funds as well? So that, I know it's not required in the same way, but it might be helpful to people. For people to see how we have spent that and how we're going to spend it.
Yeah, I think that that, yes, ma'am, I think that that is available. I think that that is available in some way that we can show that. Uh, if I understand your question, Les, can we develop some dashboards and similar type of metrics where you can show that?
Okay. I have other questions, but I'll let other. Okay, I'll come back to you. Um, Dr. Fraser?
Yes, I'd like to have a better understanding of the a team Charleston. Um. Proposal. And how is that going to be different from? What we started out with?
I I I, that's next on our agenda. Yes, so we're going to talk about that. So I'll come back to you for that.
Okay, well, let me ask about. How, how, where are we going to get these mental health professionals? Well, because when I talk to people in the communities. They're talking about learning loss, specifically reading. And mental health. Are we training our own mental health professionals? Because they're certainly not out in the community, waiting to be hired by C C S D. And I don't see how we're going to be able to leverage. An organization to meet the demand that we're talking about at this level.
Yes, ma'am. I I'd like to defer to maybe some of the members of the cabinet that I think. Um, you know, identifying that is a key priority and putting. Uh, it in our application is that's something that's part of our intention for our S R goals is really key. How we bring in the external resources to execute that after first, maybe someone else.
I can answer that. Dr. Fraser. You're right, there is a shortage of mental health professionals in the community. We have a contract typically with the Department of Mental Health. That provide services for our students. And we've been in conversations with them throughout the summer about what we see as an increased need. And they highlighted that in our most recent conversations. So, Dr. I'm sorry, Ms. Coker and the Department of Alternative Programs have been reaching out. To local community organizations to get recommendations and solicit additional resources for mental health. To ensure that we have sufficient options. One potential partnership is the partnership with the Medical University of South Carolina. Which is interested in also expanding its direct service. So that's a conversation we're having in the next couple of weeks. Um, I think the the good news on this is there's lots of telehealth options. I just think that we in general would like to ensure that there's more face-to-face connections for children. And it obviously also minimizes um some HIPAA and other considerations that we'd have to have in place. Um, the the last thing I will say is that we have, I, there was some news in the summer. Around Medicaid covers mental health services for some kids. Who live in lower socioeconomic backgrounds and then families who have more income may have private insurance. The district is also prepared for those families that might fall in the middle where there's not an easy answer to cover those costs. To ensure that all children have at least initial access to free mental health services.
I'd like for us to take a look at maybe training a cohort of mental health professionals to serve. The district. I um. I see that that we might run into some problems with trying to access the needed resources from the mental health. Um, organization. But um, at some point in time, I'd sure like to talk with you about that possibility.
Certainly, ma'am.
All right, anybody else have any other questions? Dr. French, I need.
Okay.
Um, I did want to quickly just follow up. When you're looking at mental health services for students, are you? Are you working with the partners that we do have and that we might have in the future to make sure that we can maintain consistency for each student to meet with the same counselors? Um, so that they have more effective.
That's, that's the priority and why some of the telehealth options are less desirable because it's more about. Physicians than a relationship necessarily. And that, I'm I'm speaking in generalities because that's certainly not true for all providers, but that's been one of our initial concerns. We also have, as as you know, a large or sufficient social work and psychology department. Some of our school psychologists which have. Testing and other requirements are also pivoting to think about ways in which they can support the schools. Particularly at the beginning of the year when we know we will have a large number of students coming back. Who are, have gone through trauma, may have had tough time, or have at least eighteen months where they may not have been in school regularly, so needs extra support.
Okay, and this is just a real specific question. I hope has an easy answer. Um, given that the state legislature is trying to limit virtual program participation in districts. I I'm just trying to remember, I think that we're only at one percent of our student population for enrollment in virtual program right now. Is that correct?
It's, it's, it's significantly below five percent and we are, if if parents contact us wanting uh to to be admitted to the virtual program. And Ms. Belcher and her staff are trying to work with parents, individuals of low country virtual and make that happen.
Okay, good.
Any other questions?
So can we ask questions about the non-S R portion?
Sure.
Anything on the superintendent? Yeah, that was, that was very um a specific question I have. But are you saying that if parent, we have not, our cap's around twenty-two hundred, based on the five percent?
Right.
Are you saying that low country virtual will accept students? Even now, if parents call before to, are they prepared to serve that cap?
Or they, they are not prepared. There are eight districts now participating and they're not prepared to serve five percent of eight districts, but we. Talked with Ms. Ambrose the end of last week, I believe, and they are on a, on a case-by-case basis trying to help us. They do still have some vacancies or. Uh, I should say they have capacity to expand.
Okay. Uh, is there any chance that we could accommodate virtual? I mean, I think we've known all along there was a five percent cap. I don't think we anticipated this sort of rise, but that's part of what you have to be nimble about with this. With these situations. Can we accommodate these students or are we too far down the road to? Provide five percent of the district students with virtual education?
I I would never want to say never. We want our children back in school if, but for those who have. Specific health uh challenges of their own or in their families, we absolutely want to be empathetic and understanding and responsive to that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And my last question is, how many principals um of the schools that you listed? Left the school for another job within C C S D? And how many of those jobs were newly created for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year?
Three, I believe. Two.
Just two?
Two.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Reverend Mac?
I just wanted to tag right back onto Ms. Coker's question about the number of acres. I want to make sure. So. Is there opportunities? Is there opportunities for parents to still um sign up for virtual if they choose to do so for their primary school year? Is there still space?
Um, if, if parents are at this point. Very reluctant to send their children back to school, if they will reach out and let their principal know that or reach out here at the district office, call that a helpline. Um, or uh, any of us, we will, we are trying very hard to accommodate them through um the low country virtual option.
Okay, I'm sorry. I do have one more question.
All right, that's good.
So Jeff, you mentioned that parents have been calling about the fourteen day quarantine, talking about vaccinated versus unvaccinated. But you didn't say, is the fourteen day quarantine universal for vaccinated? And even someone that comes to you and proves the vaccination will still be quarantined for fourteen days. You talked about the discrepancy, but you, I don't think I heard you clearly say everybody will be quarantined for fourteen days.
So those that are vaccinated and do not have symptoms. Uh, are not quarantined.
So, okay. Um, but if they choose to not disclose their vaccination status, have symptoms. Or are unvaccinated, they will all be quarantined.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Fraser, then Dr. French.
Okay. Tell me a little bit more about how we're going to um form the advisory group and what role they will be playing. Um, Reverend Mac sent out, um. I noticed that we need to refer, board members needed to refer one or two questions to an advisory committee.
Oh, that's right on the agenda. I'll take some special call.
Interface that group is what role they're going to be playing with the whole project?
I think that's later. I think that's later.
Yes.
On the agenda.
We can talk about later down.
We'll talk about that.
Okay.
Okay, Dr. French?
Regarding quarantine and staff, not just students, so, uh, our same, same goes for staff, that if you are vaccinated, no symptoms, even if you have a close contact, you should work. Is that, is that the plan? And the other thing is, I was wondering if we're going to be able to use, I know the, uh, this is the Family Recovery Act that allowed us to extend leave options to staff last year. I believe that program ended. Are we looking at possibility of using S R funds to help staff not have to use their sick leave when they're in quarantine?
Do you want me to defer that question, Dr. Postaway?
Uh, I, since Mr. Briggman is in here, I'll take the question. Um, this district ran that program through June 30, even though it expired earlier in the year. For the, for the, as of July 1, um, there is not additional pay for those who are, um, who have to be quarantined, because all adults have an opportunity to get vaccinated.
But a, a person who's vaccinated could still become symptomatic and have to quarantine?
That it, that could happen, yes ma'am.
So, so you're saying that, that we're not going to extend that to them?
At this point in time, we do not have a policy in place. We'll have to, we are not quite sure what we're facing. It will be like it was last year. We'll have to take it month by month and see what the conditions, what, what, what is warranted by the conditions. But at this point in time, um, if one can work from home, they're not.
So you, so you might have them working from home?
Oh, yes, ma'am. If, if they can, if they're willing to do that.
They're not too sick.
To do it, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay, that includes the superintendent's report.
Thank you.
The next item, item five, is the Strategic Education Committee. And the Herterick is on the Zoom, but she asked me to chair this part, because that's easier. So the first item is, um, item A, Achieve Charleston. So I think, Ms. Waters, you're going to address that?
Yes, um, between myself and Buffy Roberts, who's out, we're going to tag team the presentation. Um, the first thing that I want to do, uh, before getting into the presentation component is sort of re-ground in exactly what Achieve Charleston is. I think it was April when we first introduced this initiative, and the ad hoc committee got busy working and have not made a formal presentation since. And so just to remind everybody exactly what this is, there are about 86, uh, or so, I think 86 or 89 programs of this nature across the country. These programs typically called Promise programs, or, you know, have their own names depending on where they are, are designed to create access to post-secondary opportunities for students. Simply put, um, it is, it is designed to make a pathway that is clear for more students to access college or careers after, uh, the secondary and primary levels. We took that, uh, took that as the sort of template and then talked through, through a series of about nine meetings that were official and several conversations and many articles read and many, many thoughts, and developed sort of an initial template for what the next three years would look like as we develop our own Promise-type program, which we are calling Achieve Charleston. So Buffy and I got kind of got going to give the formal presentation, and then we'll do, um, questions at the end. Ms. Roberts, did you want to add anything before we get started?
I think you did a really good job summarizing basically how that process worked. And, um, I think we can just go ahead.
Perfect. So the, um, the committee was led by myself, Lauren Herterick and Erica Copley. Uh, and we, we had amazing support from our university partners in the district through, uh, Dr. Welch, Melissa Stowacher, um, and Dr. Robert Tagorda. Dr. Robert Tagorda works for the Long Beach Promise, which is, uh, where we got a lot of input about how to stand up something of this magnitude. Uh, Dr. Tagorda has been with Long Beach for the entire eight years since the inception of their program, uh, and had lots of lessons learned that he could help us with. And so he was a great sounding board as we talked through what we needed to be considering and thinking about to ensure that we get off to a successful and effective start. And on staff, we had the wonderful assistance of Ms. Erica Taylor, Michelle English-Watson, and Buffy Roberts. I can't say enough about how well this group worked together and just how thoughtful everybody was. It was truly a bright spot, um, for my tenure, short tenure as a board member, uh, because it was a space where we actually got to talk about, um, what mattered, which is, which is trying to, uh, implement systems that work for students. So we, we unveiled, and I'm going to hand this over to, to Ms. Roberts in just a moment, but we unveiled, uh, so, that is such a dramatic way to put that. We shared, uh, in the last couple of meetings, a list of, uh, the vision, vision, mission, and goals. You will not see those goals referenced tonight, and, uh, we'll talk about that a little bit more when we get into the presentation. Uh, but I did want to restate, since the vision was left off this document, that ultimately, our vision is that we create a system where post-secondary access and success is not defined by race or income. So I want to make it very clear that this initiative is for the least of, of those, as we sometimes call them, the students who are not having access, who are not getting the information, uh, and who we are often fearful that we will forget and neglect in these processes. And so I want you to keep that very much top of mind, that all of these conversations center around how we provide access for all students and not just some. Ms. Roberts, would you like to, to pick up from there with the official way you want me to keep?
I'll pick up wherever you would like.
Okay. Okay, um, so I'll, um, actually, I think we originally talked about we would, you would do the, the, the second half, so I'll keep going. Um, so the mission, of course, is that Achieve Charleston aims to fulfill the academic potential of all Charleston County School District students by offering continuous support, access, and an achievable pathway for post-secondary success. So again, this is about access, um, it's about all students, and it's about taking into account what support is needed for them ongoing. Uh, the impact statement, and, um, the reason we really wanted to make sure we brought this to you today is that with S R three funds, Achieve Charleston will establish the necessary infrastructure to, to address systemic barriers to post-secondary success. The key, um, hallmarks of this program, uh, is one, access. It's more options after high school. It is visibility of what programs are available to those students, and it is a common language around what it means, uh, to be successful as a student, uh, who's, who's exiting C C S D. Rigor, uh, rigorous and consistent program design. We want to make sure that we're examining the system to really understand what is needed to connect the dots and make it so that students are not missing the mark and, and not leaving our classrooms, having obtained everything that they need to be successful and to gain entry into programs of their choice after they leave us. It needs to be data-driven. We want to be focused on where the systemic barriers are. So that means we're going to actually need to audit and examine the system and understand what the data tells us. Where are we successful? Where are we doing things amazing? And where are there spaces where we could be doing better? And how can we make those two, make those two things, um, you know, be more consistent, marry those two? Alignment with the existing C C S D services. We don't want to reinvent the wheel where it's not necessary. There are programs that are existing in the community. There are programs that exist within C C S D that we can be, uh, borrowing from, expanding, uh, and partnering with to make sure that this goes well. We had a lot of, uh, great conversation around community organizations and how we will need to make sure that we're supporting and better aligning what we're offering with what community organizations are offering, because we, we won't be able to do it all as a school district. We don't have the time of, of day. You know, we only get so much seat time. And so how do we take advantage of other program partners that are out there, uh, after-school programs, mentorship programs, et cetera? We also want to stand up an advisory committee. We think that along with the board, that the community, uh, students themselves, parents, um, teachers, uh, anybody who has a seat, our university partners, anybody who has, uh, a stake in our students' education, uh, whether it be them, you know, from the university perspective, wanting to see students come to them prepared, whether it be families wanting to see their students be, uh, as successful as possible when they leave us. We want to make sure that they have something, uh, something to say in a space, uh, in which to say it when it comes to Achieve Charleston. And ultimately, what you see before you today, um, and on the more defined sheet for the next three years, uh, we've established objectives for what the, what the work output will be. And so, again, we released goals a couple of meetings ago. Those goals have not gone away. They will, they will be worked on and, and, um, and refined when the actual work begins. This presentation here is to show you what the program design will need to look like and what will be accomplished in the next three years using S R funds. So again, this is not nitty-gritty program-specific goals. These are overarching goals of how you, how we will stand up this program and what characteristics of the program you should see complete at the end of the next three years. So, um, the, the year one is really research and development. You know, in talking with the group, we, we really felt that it was important not to try to immediately get off the ground with a student-facing program. We believe that's how you make mistakes. That's how you waste money. We think that research and development is very important in that first year. And the development of a strategic plan for Achieve Charleston will be the result. Year two is focused on capacity building and starting to implement the plan for year three and beyond. And so when we say capacity building, if you spend year one thinking about what is necessary and what the program needs to look like, then you spend year two actually getting the pieces in order. If we go through and we hear feedback from students and families that said, you know, we want to see a mentorship program. I need, I need more people to speak into the life of my child, uh, then we have to start getting the, the, the bones and the measures in place for that. If we hear back that, you know, it, it, the academics are great, and what my student really needs is a school counselor, somebody to walk them through the process, because I don't know anything about filling out the FAFSA, then we need to start setting those things up. And so year two will be all about capacity and taking the learnings from year one and starting to get some of those things in place. In year three, we expect full implementation. Um, and at that point, you would see those annual, annual reports with performance data tied back to the goals. And the goals that we shared a couple of weeks ago may still be the goals in the end. We, we think they were very exhaustive. But, um, you know, a, a, all jokes aside, I think that, um, once a group gets in, uh, engaged in this work, and once they start hearing from the system, they may see a need to, to refine those and keep moving forward. And so when we think about, um, the programs, um, in year one, it's conducting comprehensive needs assessment. In year two, we're prioritizing and preparing the programs that'll roll out. And then in year three, we're implementing the programs and then making adjustments as we need to throughout the cycle. And then finally, the data piece. Um, the data from year one will be, uh, the goals and, uh, the strategic plan itself, uh, and, and sort of the survey feedback or any sort of, uh, audit feedback that comes out of the system. And then in year two, the baseline data and targets that will guide the work. And then finally, uh, we would again be enacting those goals and just refining through, uh, continuous improvement. Ultimately, um, we, we started this process with the College of Charleston and Trident Tech as partners, knowing that we would need to expand. But, but, you know, we certainly didn't want to get out of the gate and add too many folks until, um, until, until we had something really that we could move forward with. Um, and so we know that over the next three years, we're going to need to add people to those partnerships, create formal agreements, and understand what needs to come from those partners and what we need to deliver to them to make it successful, because it is, it is a reciprocal engagement. Um, and then in year three, we'll be coordinating their, their, um, their contributions and ready to roll out. Again, we talked about the advisory committee, so under the stakeholders, uh, we will need to develop an advisory committee and have a formal plan for how all members of that, those committees will work together and what each will be responsible for producing. And then finally, the operations staff. You'll see from the plan that Buffy's going to talk about, we will need to hire staff to manage this. This will need to, need to be someone's job. It's going to be a tremendous effort to corral, uh, all of the different entities and make sure we are constantly hearing from them. Make sure that the board is engaged, uh, make sure that, that, um, you know, it's, it's operating smoothly. And so we will need a senior leader, uh, to lead this effort, and they will also need staff. But, um, I'll let Ms. Roberts kind of talk, speak to the rest of that.
Thank you, Ms. Waters.
So does Ms. Waters explain?
Buffy, for one, just so we can calibrate, um, define year one, year two, and year three in dates.
So, okay, we, I prefer to finish the program. I mean, the, the, it's, okay, yeah. Ms. Roberts?
Um, as Ms. Waters explained, so the existing resources will be used to implement Achieve Charleston, but the initiative will also require a great deal of coordination and collaboration between our C C S D partners and our stakeholders. Because of this, um, three key staff members will be required, a leader who will oversee the initiative and ensure formal post-secondary, um, partnerships are in place, a community engagement officer who will ensure that stakeholder input, um, is there, and a grant writer who'll be responsible for, um, grant management and the continued engagement of our investors or benefactors, donors, um, or any grant opportunities, um, that we would need to continue that sustainability. Okay? Next slide. This initiative will help align the C C S D services with the conditions that are required for post-secondary success. Systemic barriers will be addressed, and professional development for staff, especially in the area of cultural competency, will be provided. So in order to accomplish this, we know that some technical assistance or contracted services, um, will be needed. We'll provide an estimate of that in the, um, last slide that we have. And then if you'll go to the next one. Um, additionally, the initiative will consider a pilot program, um, to support students in accessing, um, college credit courses, dual enrollment opportunities, um, per se. Uh, we are also providing a, um, an estimate of that in this last, last slide. So if you'll go to the very last slide. Right there, thank you. Um, so this, this provides you a line-by-line, um, year-by-year, um, estimate of, um, the cost. A couple of things just to, to point out. Um, when we look at the, um, the contracted services and, um, or technical assistance, like the strategic planning, um, professional development, that sort of thing, um, we base that on like a 15% of the, um, 15% estimate of the total budget. And then when we look at the, um, the pilot program, which is that, um, that next to last item for the total, um, we base that on the idea that, um, 100 students or so, which is like 2% to 4% of the, um, 11, 12 grade population, um, would be involved in a pilot program that year one, and then of course, um, doubling that in year two, and then, um, continuation of that if the, um, the pilot is successful. And so that's basically the, um, the budget in a nutshell.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Um, so we'll take, um, we'll take questions. I'll go back to Ms. Coates' question. The question around whether or not this would, you know, what would constitute year one, year two, year three? One, we, we didn't set a specific date from that. I would imagine that it would be at the point that the board approves this and the district can get to work with it, then we would set a date at that point.
Do we have the ability to execute that immediately upon approval, assuming 21, 22 would be the first year?
Well, I think we have the ability to, to, to execute anything. I mean, I think, as we heard in the previous presentation, the funds haven't hit, and we're, we're certainly spending money. So I don't, I don't want to get in the way of the, the, the budget, uh, for the district. But I think from a, from the standpoint of, you know, what we've laid out today, if I, ideally, if the funds were here, we could move forward.
So, uh, and that's, that's kind of my question is, these are outside of the budget. These are reimbursable expenses. So we could, in theory, begin getting this groundwork done this year. The money's not the, 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 the per se issue on that, because it's a, it's external and reimbursable. Do we have the capacity? Now, I, I want this to start in the 21, 22 school year so that year two can be happening, um, more quickly and implementation can happen more quickly. So i- is it, is it feasible? Or should we not expect to see anything of this work starting until, say, January or February?
So I, I would think that year one can start when, uh, the board approves moving forward.
Perfect. Um, and my last question is, define the pilot program versus the total implementation. What, what is that?
Um, the pilot program is, um, one of the things that the, um, the group discussed. And the idea is that you would, um, would engage students in a, an opportunity to take, um, some dual enrollment courses. If, um, this initiative proves to be, um, successful, um, in opening up some access that was not previously there, then we would continue that and then, um, of course, sustain that. And I don't know if Ms. Waters would like to add anything.
No, I think that was, that was.
So I mean, there's hope that students can be benefiting from some of this work as, within a year.
Yes, ma'am. And one of the things, just to add to the, um, the earlier statement, uh, the, I think one of the reasons why the, um, team and, again, again, Ms. Waters, please feel to, feel free to elaborate. But, um, one of the team, one of the reasons the team decided to, um, to really look at that first year being a research and development, um, year is so that we could make sure that what was, whatever was done during that year was done with thoughtful intent. So that, um, sustainability could occur, um, for the future. So it's not something that was, you know, certainly something that was very planned out.
Thank you. Thank you. This is excellent.
Thank you. And I see, um, Ms. Coakley has a hand raised. You still have a question, Ms. Coakley?
Um, yes, ma'am. Um, I was just curious, um, Dr. Postlethwaite, this was for you. And I'm just, and, and, and everybody, but we're starting a new school year right now, you know, with the surge in COVID and less protection in place for our students. Um, I was just curious to think or wonder, y'all really think this is a good time to implement like a new governance structure? Um, of this, you know, magnitude right now? And was just curious, like, you know, why aren't we really using this money to be used to address some of these services without implementing just an entire another new structure?
So I, m- my personal feeling, uh, since you addressed the question to me, Ms. Coakley, is that this is what school systems are supposed to be doing. We, we, we are, this is our job. It's our core mission is to ensure that more students leave us with better life options than they would have had, had they not been with us. And so I don't see this as something new. I, I view it as helping us gain clarity about what it is we need to do and, um, and bringing focus to the core mission. I don't think it requires a significant change in governance at all. I hope that's a helpful response.
Um, sorry to kinda, but like you said, um, in, but it's been six years already. So like, how do you really think that this one particular initiative is going to help everything that we've like been battling to try to change in the last few years, this one initiative?
This is one of several board goals. I don't think any one thing in and of itself helps. I do think this is the key focus, though it's the critical mission around which everything else revolves. And I, I don't think that the fact that we have, are battling a COVID pandemic should interfere with our pushing forward with our core mission. And there's no challenge with funding at all to do this.
Ms. Coakley, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank.
Thank you. Dr. Fraser, you had a question?
I just want to make a, a couple of comments. First of all, is this a priority right now? I thought that ESER funding would be used to litigate some of the learning loss that most of our students have occurred because of COVID. I have some concerns about spending money that we have not yet received. Secondly, this board is going to look totally different in the next year and a half. Many of us will not even be sitting around this table. I do plan to be here, but I want to be here because people believed in the fact that I supported transparency and I did the right thing for our students. Right now I see us as coming up with an idea of trying to implement a strategy that's not really important right now. What we need to be looking at is how do we address learning loss for most of our students who have been left behind in the system? And, and then secondly, years ago, um, the district implemented a training program for its GADAS counselors so that they could be career global career facilitators. And this is the exact work that they did. They prepared students for college. How and why are we duplicating those services? And you're right, um, Dr. Postlethwaite, this is what we're supposed to be doing anyway. Those students who are going to be going to college, they're going to go to college. And the fact that we're going to spend money upfront, where we have already made a commitment to this community, that we're going to be looking at addressing the needs of students who have not ac- academically made some headway during this COVID. I'm, I'm very concerned about this and I'd like to have some answers about why are we moving in the direction of trying to put the cart again before the horse?
Right. Well, I mean, I have some time, but certainly I was up either.
So I would have three responses. First, it, this isn't just about preparing students for college. It's about pre-K, starting at the preschool level all along the way, making sure more students are ready to succeed at the next level, which is the same priority that I think you were talking about. So it's making sure that students are ready as they come through our system to take advantage of the opportunities that are there for them after high school, regardless of whether those opportunities are in high skill, high wage jobs in the workforce or whether they're at one of the technical training programs or whether they're at a four-year college. So this is for everybody and it's about getting more students ready all along the way. The second thing I would point out is that this takes less than one percent of the funding that you'll be receiving. So it's, it's about one percent of one hundred sixty-three million dollars. So you will stat, still have a hundred sixty-one million to spend on other things. And then the third, um, um, point I would make is that this was the board's number one goal that the board voted on unanimously. So it, it is part of a whole system. It's not separating out, separating out college-bound students and doing something for them. It's about all of the student, every single student, every single student. Every student who walks through our doors ought to have better opportunities when they walk out of our doors. And this is about every single one of them. So I think maybe there's a misunderstanding about that.
No, this is what we are here for. This is why we have the Charleston County School District to make sure that every student have the same opportunity to move forward in their education. And it just seems to me that we have actually already decided that we're going to spend this money um, before we've e- even received the money. First of all, by hiring, um, what, two persons and looking at a budget and moving it forward for three years. Um, but I just wanted to, to make that comment because I, I have my constituents concerned about and looking at how we're spending the money and they're going to be looking at the programs that we implement.
Dr. Fraser, I appreciate. So, so I just want to say, one, one, I agree with what Dr. Postlethwaite shared. But then I also would like to say that we have a lot of different parts of the system. We have academics, we have, uh, you know, under that, we, we have several departments. We have the finance piece. We have, you know, so many different parts of the system. There's not one individual that's focused on making sure that this type of integration happens. And I think that that's what programs of this nature provide, uh, that is different. Because sometimes you can get to doing your job and you're focused on your job and, and you work together, certainly. But when, when it is someone's responsibility to make sure that the system is integrated and make sure that we're looking at it all, it's, it's more likely that it will happen effectively. Um, I, I would like to offer that and, and reverberate. It seemed like you had something you wanted to offer as well.
Yeah, I was just going to add, uh, maybe we can look at it differently, Dr. Fraser. Uh, as an, as an opportunity of achieve Charleston, which I, I love the, the, the CCSD promise. Because I think word promise, uh, helps resonate a little bit more, but needless to say, achieve Charleston is what it's named. But I, I think this is an opportunity to use this as a new overarching opportunity to build a pathway of what we know CCSD should look like as far as providing the, the resources and what's needed for our students as they come through our schools and through our system. I think this is an opportunity for us to take this time to build, uh, from ground up uh, of what the chief Charleston or what the CCSD promise would be as far as educational opportunity in Charleston County. So I think this is an opportunity for us to, uh, and, and you, and you, and I'm saying you and us as the board is an opportunity to build uh, of what that promise or what that achievement will look like for each student that come through. And as we begin to use, uh, ESER funding per se, uh, and, and in this pathway, we can, at that point, begin to build those pathways of things that need to be in line within the system. Uh, so that when we do begin into the implementation, the planning and state in year one, year two and year three, uh, these things will already be in place that we know will work. Uh, and, and that way we can feed that right into the pathway of this achieve Charleston. And as we continue to grow and move forward, we will have a, a clear pipeline. It's just not CCSD, right? It's about the entire community. Uh, it, it involves all of the different aspect of, of companies like Boeing and Mercedes and Volvo. And so, so it's going to become even bigger than what it is right now because we're talking about a promise that when any child that comes into the school system here in Charleston County, when they leave, they will have a clear pipeline to where either it may be to a college career, uh, into the workforce, uh, whatever that sector may be. But our promise is that when they leave, they will have a clear pathway and achieving either one of those goals and be successful. So this is where the opportunity comes to building that framework.
I did, Dr. French. No, I was just going to acknowledge that Ms. Coakley had her hand up, but since she's already asked a question, I'll go to you first and then we'll come back to her.
Okay, um, one thing I wanted to ask, so during the superintendent's report, there was a goals update page where you talked about achieve Charleston and you had something pretty specific about the goal. You know, more students ready, every classroom, every grade. Is that the same as this?
Yes, it's, it's a. This can't happen without.
That's good. That's good. I just wanted to check because this goal I totally agree with. I also agree with making sure that we help students find, uh, ways to get access to education at colleges and, um, career institutions because it is a problem uh, that, that we haven't done. Um, but I have a few points I guess I just want to try to raise up. One is, you know, we have some programs that are doing this. We have, we have the early college program, we have the scholars program, we have Avid, which is a structure that we're using at the early college. And we could be expanding that to help students nail. Um, and what I'm, want to see lacking in this budget is more of what we talked about earlier, which is we want to put a lot of money into the classroom, into the schools to help build this, these capacities. What are we going to do? You mentioned professional development. There's nothing in the budget for professional development. The only thing we have for the student focus is the pilot programs for students. And I'm, I'm concerned that seems to be weighted based on just, uh, the cost of a dual enrollment program. For instance, how is this different from a dual enrollment? We could be building that capacity right now. We have lots of dual enrollment accredited teachers. We could have more. Um, so I guess I want to see more of that part. But I also disagree that we don't have a person whose job it is to make all of this integrated. That's the superintendent's job.
So I want to address some of the things that you, that you said. One, and I'll address that last thing you said, but the very first thing is if you'll go back to Paige, I think it's about four, alignment with existing CCSD services. And you did correctly identify several programs that we have already. And we acknowledge that there are many programs that are. We have many programs occurring. The goal of, of, of achieve Charleston is not to run, is not to take the place and run every program that's in Charleston. It is to leverage all the services and be the, and be the body inside of CCSD that makes sure that they work together. And it is those three folks' job to, to make sure that they're aligning with the community. What do students and parents need to be different for their students to have a better experience in school? For instance, that is what this does. It does not take the place of dual enrollment. It does not go into early college. It can certainly advocate for the expansion of early college. That doesn't need to be inside of this budget because that is academic endeavor. That's run by the C A O. Achieve Charleston's job is to make sure that those things work together and that we are taking the best of what the system has to offer, expanding them, leveraging them. So we don't need to fill this budget with all of the money. The individual departments need to manage their budgets and their work. And this makes sure that it's happening. This is a board-led focus on ensuring that it all happens. And the second piece, that it is the superintendent's job to make sure that goes together, is actually the superintendent's job to manage the finance, to manage the academics, to manage the communications, to manage the maintenance and so on and so forth. This as a single initiative is a new way of looking at it. It is not currently in the job description of our superintendent. And I'm not sure about you, but I don't think that we should be adding it. It's too important to add to an existing F T E. We do need to dedicate a person to making sure that it happens effectively.
Any other questions?
I wasn't, I, I wasn't finished if I have any more time.
Okay, go ahead. What else?
Well, I guess I, this is asking for ESER money. And since there's information that's required, since there are programs that you're, you're referencing that need to, to be beefed up. I would just like us to be asking for ESER money for that part of it.
And, and, and they probably will, Dr. French. This is, this is one million dollars. We're getting a hundred and sixty-three million dollars. This is one million dollars to make sure that there is oversight of it, to make sure that this work is accounted for. But I would like to, I would, just give me one moment. We have some new hands. We have some new hands. And I just want to get to them because I don't want to make this a back and forth. I think we'll, we'll vote at the end and, you know. Uh, Ms. Herter, if you had a question?
I just wanted to reiterate that this is about equity and access. I'm off of mute.
Louder, Lauren. Yeah, can you just get what, like closer to your computer?
Can you hear me now?
Not really.
Could you type it into the chat? And we could read it and.
There she goes.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, while she's typing, uh, Ms. Coates had a question.
So, um, I actually, I don't think I could have said it better than Ms. Waters because I do, first off, I read it wrong. You shouldn't have made it match the one sixty-three because I didn't realize it was one percent of one sixty-three million. But I don't think we could have said it better. I mean, this is, um, this is one percent of the funds to create a system to coordinate it. And it, it identically matches a conversation I had with another nonprofit entity, uh, across the state earlier this week. And it was described as a bus depot. Somebody has to know, somebody has to be there that knows when those buses are leaving every morning to do the work and when they come back in, what they talk about. So I, I think that it's, I, I, I don't share the same concerns about the budget or how it may duplicate a service because I don't see it as that. I do see it as creating that one entity that makes sure that if, to use the example that's been used, if early college works, it doesn't slip through the cracks and continue to serve two percent of our student population per grade, that we find a way to serve ten percent of the kids per grade. So I don't actually share those concerns at all, but I would make one caution that these are two parallel programs with two parallel sets of leaders, with two parallel plans for community engagement and two parallel sets of, of presentations that are almost the same thing. And I think it could get confusing for the community to have the ESER committee going out and doing public asking for how we spend the ESER money while a chief Charleston is going out with an advisory committee to discuss what is in essence, how we spend ESER money, but it's in a much more sustainable system in long ways. So that'd be my only caution, that some of this confusion that you're hearing could come from just mere timing, that these two things came at the same time and that they're both using the same funding source and they're very similar in how you plan to go out and engage. So that would be my only caution, but I, I don't think there is a single thing in this presentation that shouldn't happen.
No, I, I, that makes a lot of sense. I do think timing could be a, a part of confusion and it'll certainly be up to the district to coordinate and make sure that doesn't become, um, comes more confusing. The one thing I would say is, of course, the chief Charleston will outlive the ESER piece. Right. And so it'll, and not, not that you weren't insinuating that, but it will continue, um, after.
Yes, the sustainability piece.
Right. And I did want to acknowledge that, uh, Ms. Herter did write into the chat.
Yes.
She just wanted to make a comment that this is about access and, and equity for all students. Um, and, and I'm sorry, we couldn't hear you for you to say it yourself. Uh, it seems like we have a question from Dr. Fraser and from Dr. French.
Yeah, um, during the middle school, all students are required to sit through the guidance counselor and complete an I G P, an individual graduation plan. Parents are called in, sit down with the counselor and then you decide how this student is going to move forward. I don't see this program that we're trying to implement as being any different from what we already doing. But my last concern is if this board, if the function of this board, the role of this board is to do two things, and that is to evaluate. the role of this board is to do two things, and that is to evaluate the superintendent and to develop policy. And here we are coming into the realm of developing programs, pushing our programs to the community, knowing that in two years, this board is going to look a little bit different, probably a whole lot different. Have we given any thought to why we're here? We made promises to our constituents. And where are we with this program?
Dr. Frazier, I think I think that's a good point. I think, one, this gives us something to evaluate the superintendent against. It's effectively running a program like this. The other thing is that that situation that happens in middle school,
I G P.
The I G P, I would I would say that it should happen much earlier, that parents and students and the system should be thinking about what students need to be much, need to be doing much earlier. But then also that process is not something that will go away or would have replaced. It would be expanded upon. Again, this is about aligning existing CCSD services and expanding them and making them more robust. And so why not start early with taking kindergarten students to a college campus so that they can see and and start and start to to sit down sooner. You know, none of those things that you're saying are going to stop happening. It's about putting a thoughtful system in place to make sure that it's done the best that it can be done.
Definitely.
Exactly. And Dr. Dr. French, and I think then Ms. Darby had a question.
One thing I wanted to make sure, because you talked about removing barriers and then there's some talk about enrollment in a program, and I just want to make sure we're not setting up another application system in the system for our students to have to access to be able to benefit from this. Were you talking about enrollment in college classes or were you talking about enrollment in a specific program within the district?
I think we're talking about enrollment in college classes. Whatever is going to happen mechanically, that is going to be up to the district to decide. We are not advocating that the board take a vote on any sort of procedural activity.
And I guess the second thing I would would just ask, I probably know what your answer is, but I don't know that we need to hire all of these people immediately while we're developing the strategic plan. Because we have rent writers, we have a lot of community engagement. We have a big communications department. Can we start some of this with perhaps just the leadership position? And then decide, once we get into our strategic plan, whether we need separate people for all those pieces or we just need to make sure we coordinate it all in the district.
So I think we had a lot of, and Ms. Roberts, I would defer to you to add anything that I missed. But we had a lot of conversation around what the staff would need to look like. We felt that this was the bare bones, their minimum that you could start with because, for one, the community engagement that would happen for this program is very, very specific. It is very specific around access to post-secondary opportunity. So we've got community engagement programs going on around, you know, what S R funding needs to be spent on. We've got S E L surveys. They're topics, you know, they're content-specific and they're going to, they're going to reach different populations of folks. And we need to have a person who's dedicated to that. The existing communication staff has already got a ton to do. I don't know that, again, to do it effectively, we can be trying to add these duties into somebody's current job. Ms. Roberts, did you have anything to add there?
The only thing I'll add is that Ms. Waters is right. During those conversations, a lot of that discussion did occur. And one of the things that the group felt was really, really important was planning for sustainability. And if we did not have that additional layer of capacity at that point, it'd be very difficult to do that. That was one of the reasons why it continued in this.
I just like to address a couple of things that Dr. that we've all talked about. One, you're right, Dr. Frazier, we have 456 days about that approximately. This group of nine, who knows who'll be here after November 2022. But I I think based on what I've heard from you and what I hear from other board members is there's a lot to do and we want to keep working. We don't, just because the whole board might change, we don't want to not move forward. And I think that that really what I hear this proposal is is pulling together and making sure those things like the I G P, yeah, that we're doing that. But then after that I G P, are those kids all being followed through in high school? Are we making sure that they're taking the classes they need for college or for a job? And so I I just see this as a real strategic way to to make sure that when you look at the success of the early college and all those kids who are going there now, who may not have gone to college before, we we may want to quadruple that. So I just, I support the initiative. I think it's been great questions and great discussion. And I'd like to see us move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Darby. River Mac, you have a
Yes, just to follow up. I just want to add that apart to Ms. Darby's point as well, too, that this overarching piece component will help address something that's near and dear to my heart as well, too, and that is closing the achievement gap. We're struggling with that for some time with the current system. With this achieve Charleston, this Charleston promise, we are revamping. We're looking at the entire piece. We may have all these different layers, but what we're saying is that these going to come together and we're going to close these gaps as far as the disparity that we're facing within our district currently right now. And that is something that I am looking very closely at and making sure that that these things take place and not just a platform per se to say that we're doing something, but we're actually delivering the promise that we're setting out to do. And it's going to take time and planning to do it right, to where we're not rushing into anything. And like we said, it's just 1% of the dollars that are being used. And I promise you, I know, and as we get later on into the agenda, you'll find that we will be adding people to an advisory committee to help look over those spending as well, too. But this component is very critical, I believe, for us to take an opportunity to start the groundwork in laying out how we want to see these different equities as and within the district close. And I want to see that gap closed.
Ms. Green? Okay, we have a motion to approve the recommendations presented today for achieve Charleston. And from Ms. Green and a second from River Mac.
We have one last question. Looks like Ms. Coakley has her hand
Oh, Ms. Coakley has her hand up. Ms. Coakley?
Oh, I just put it aside in the chat. I was just curious. And if S R funds were, if these were for a Title I school initiative, why weren't we using these funds for accelerated schools? And who's actually going to be in charge of the hiring process?
We're looking at your question.
Which question is it? The one about S R funding is for children who are, it's primarily for children who are performing below the expectation regardless which school they're in. So they're not, they're not limited to simply acceleration schools is to answer the first question. But they are to be focused on children who need help the most. And then the second question, who's in charge of the hiring process? It usually goes through the H R department into the correct division that's overseeing the project.
Okay. I'm sorry, and I'm sorry that I don't know this is the right place, but it probably, Mr. Hammer, more involved your presentation. But it's clear that achieve Charleston is, and you said it yourself, is designed for a specific segment of our student population that has traditionally been overlooked and is by definition all traditionally behind. And you want to make sure any barriers to getting on track and moving forward are removed through that. And S R is specifically designed and was funded because of the aspects of COVID and what effect that had on public education. And I say all of that to say it's clear that there are students who are not District Two, District One, District 23, District Four, District 10. Every one of our constituent boards came here and said that students have suffered effects of COVID in terms of mental health and helping fill some of those gaps. And I want to make sure that S R funds can be spent on students who are in District Two. If it's for mental health to overcome, recover from COVID, separate from achieve Charleston, which is 1%. But supports for students who were affected by COVID goes across the board to every student in Charleston County. Because we're pretty simple. Take the, take the issues of Charleston County and it's the issue of our district. They're one in the same. And I want to be very clear that that money is not going to specifically not go to students who have needs related from COVID just because of their I struggle for the word, give me a word here, just because of their means. Is that accurate to say for S R funding? Certainly not the, not the focus of achieve Charleston, but achieve Charleston is not all of the S R money. Because I will expect S R funding
We've got a motion on the floor specifically for the achieve Charleston fund.
So when we vote on that, I'll let Mr. Hammer answer that question.
He answered and said, yes, that is true.
Good.
Okay, so any other questions on this particular agenda, Dr. French?
Yes, so it is this agenda item, but it's it's related to how we're going to use S R funds for to support this program ultimately, to support the ideals of achieve Charleston. So is the board prepared to make sure that our S R, you know, proposal that we get in a week actually addresses these K through 12 metrics, like making sure we know where readiness is? And like what, basically what you outlined here in your report, Dr. Possilway. But can we agree that we're going to really hold to that? That we're going to have S R funding that's going to supplement what happens in the classroom and I G P and
Yes, yes.
In addition to this, because my main problem with the proposal is this just so focused on the
This is a teeny, teeny little part of that. We got a long presentation earlier.
I know that, but I thought achieve Charleston would have covered more of that.
All right, we've got it. We've got a motion on the floor, so we'll call the question. Yeah, I think we're going, we can vote electronically or do you want me to do voice? Okay, so we're voting. I'll just do a voice vote. Ms. Coates, how do you vote?
We're talking 5A achieve Charleston.
5A, it's achieve Charleston.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Waters?
Yeah.
River Mac?
Yes.
Yes.
Joyce, yeah. Dr. French? Dr. Frazier, that was a A. Okay. Ms. Herterick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Coakley?
Abstained.
Abstained?
That's correct.
Okay, the motion passes. Okay. I think I think Mr. Hammer, and I would like to say I know how to pronounce Mr. Hammer's last name because we are actually related. That's my son's name. He did answer your question, yes. All right, the next item is 5B indicators of student progress. Ms. Felcher?
Thank you, ma'am. As the board knows, we presented extensive data at the June committee of the, I'm sorry, the July committee of the whole meeting. And because it was extensive, we wanted to make sure that we allowed time for questions and for board members to process. We did receive some questions from Dr. French, which we've replied through and shared with the entire board. So that is our focus now. Before I I stopped talking, I did want to flag for the board that a second half of the data will be shared in September. Due to state regulations, things like the high school end of course exams and any S C ready or S C pass data is embargoed until September 1st, also A C T and A P data. So at that point, it will be, the embargo will be left and we'll be able to share that data publicly and plan to do so at the September committee of the whole. Any questions from the last board presentation that myself or Ms. Roberts or anyone else on learning services can answer?
So any questions about the data that was presented at our last meeting? Dr. French?
Well, yeah, actually, this relates to a question I felt that I didn't get an answer to. When when you say you want to have goals targeted towards at or above grade level, and I know that not all of our tests are the same, but mostly what we hear is meets or exceeds expectations. And so I really wanted to understand better, is that, is that what you're going to focus on? That level of, and instead of, sometimes I see statistics coming from the staff that include approaches, expectations, and along with meets or exceeds. And I'm hoping that our targets are going to be based on meets or exceeds, not anything below that.
That is our aim when we talk about readiness is meets or exceeds expectations, which is aligned to grade level. When we talk about expectations, that's grade level expectations is what we're referring to. Ms. Roberts, would you add anything to that?
And then, so even though I was responding to something that was in the administrative content, but has been pulled, are those targets for this year real? You have targets in that document for next spring. Are those the targets we're going to try to achieve?
That was our aim, ma'am, based on the data that we had at the point where we filled out the state. I want to make sure I get the right language, Roads Recovery Plan.
Right.
So that did not have all the data at that point, so that'll allow us to step back and see where we were. It was based on the data we had at that point.
And those goals are going to be updated in September.
Correct.
Based on where we are right now.
That's right.
Okay, good. And just in, just in curious, because from 22, spring 22 to spring 23, the increase in progress was tiny, like 1%. And is that the kind of progress we're trying to make? 1% increase in students meeting or exceeding expectations? That seems really low to me. To go from like 50.1% to 51.8%.
I mean, we would like to see all, you know, close the achievement gap and get really on track. I think one of the things that's tricky about the technical piece, which Ms. Roberts knows so much better than I do, is when we calculate the readiness metric prior to COVID, we had multiple data points that were included. So it was S C ready and MAP or Fastbridge, which allowed us to have more sense of the, and it was multiple years of data. So one of the challenges about these readiness metrics, as listed in that report specifically, is it was limited data at that period of time. So I think we want to make sure that we're triangulating all of our data and setting ambitious targets. And, you know, I'll say, as I said, I hope last meeting, our goal is to put many more kids on track for college and career. And to do that, we're going to have to get more kids to meet or exceed expectations. But I also don't want to set an unrealistic expectation to this board. I don't know of any district that's able to do that at scale in one year. It's going to be a multi-year strategy to get there.
All right, any other questions about the data? Indicators of student progress? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item six, other board committees, audit and finance committee meeting review. Ms. Green or Mr. Kennedy, let's delete that.
The three action items we'll get some information on this evening in executive session. And the other three items are for information. And of course, as always, we are available.
Okay, any questions on those non-executive session items, information items? Okay. Next item is item seven, other business, A, the legislative update.
Okay. Hi, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Brian Butler, I'm here on behalf of Darryl Campbell today. And I will be brief. So this morning, Governor McMaster held a press conference and announced that he does not plan to shut down the state, close schools or require masks of students in schools. We are expecting Attorney General Wilson to give his opinion this week also on proviso 1.108, which is the masking proviso as it relates to the mayor of Columbia, who just last week issued a state of emergency in Columbia and will also, or will still be requiring mask in schools. We will report back on that litigation as it We will report back on that lit, uh, on that litigation as it unfolds. Also tomorrow, uh, the State Board of Education will be holding a board meeting. Uh, we will be in attendance and we'll also report back on the requests for exemption for North Charleston Schools of Acceleration, so. Uh, that concludes my report and I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you all may have.
All right, anybody have any questions?
Good, was that the North Charleston High School? Cause he said schools of acceleration, I was a little confused, you mean innovation?
Yes, sorry about that, yes, it'll be North Charleston High School, Schools of Innovation.
All right, any, any other questions? So thank, you'll keep us, thank you for keeping us updated on all of that.
No problem.
Traffic, I'm way down here. Okay, all right, the next item on the agenda is 7B. This is a recommendation from the ad hoc committee reviewing the superintendent's evaluation process. So the ad hoc committee has been working on trying to put a process in place. That can be used each year versus every year, we do something a little bit different, differently. The superintendent's contract does state that she can, she proposes. A, a piece of the evaluation and, and, and so we need to do that. What the ad hoc committee wants to recommend for the 2021 evaluation, which is what we just, the school year we just finished. Is because of COVID and because, and because of COVID, we didn't. We want to do things a little bit differently for last year. Um, and so our proposal is that we sit as a group and have a third party help facilitate us. And we review the accomplishments and challenges from the 2020 and 2021 year, which y'all have this information that was presented to you. Um, for the, uh, at the end of the year at our June board meeting. So we would need to do that and looking at hopefully doing that on August 17th. Maybe about four o'clock, we can work with everybody's schedule, um, so. Then, so we would do that for last year's evaluation, and then the other document that is in here is a draft of kind of a template we would use going forward. So the ad hoc committee will come back to you probably in September with some more recommendations on how we want to move forward. For the next year and a half and hopefully pass that on what that superintendent's evaluation will look like. So the, I, I will make the motion that is included in the packet today that. A move that consistent with the terms of the superintendent's contract, that the board can tuck the superintendent's evaluation for the 2020, 21 school year. By convening an executive session at an upcoming board meeting. With each board member prepared to comment on their overall assessment of the superintendent's performance. Based on the board members' review and assessment of the superintendent's progress summary presented to the board on June 28, 2021. And that an outside party be present to facilitate the board's discussion. The board will then make any necessary motions in open session regarding the superintendent's evaluation. Okay, any, sorry, I feel like I'm yelling at you guys. Any questions about that? Dr. French?
Oh, so when will we get the, the goals that would inform our discussion on August 17?
So, so this is it for August 7th, for August 17th, for the format that we, we want you to, you can, I mean, you can look at. Everything that was done over the past year, but we're, we're having a simpler process because of. The time that's been spent on COVID and, and getting everybody back, so our, our goal would be on August 17th to talk about the things that went well.
I guess, I guess what I'm asking for is what were, you have to submit to the superintendent. What you expect her to be evaluated on, 12 months before we do it, so what did, what did, goals did you set a year ago?
That's why we, we didn't do that, so that's what, with the feedback that we will get out of this.
We're out of policy on that.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're out of policy on that. But, so based on what we talked about on October 17th, we will get feedback, although I think she probably has a pretty good idea now. Of what, and set goals for this coming up year and the evaluation that we will do next summer.
So we're doing all of that on the 17th, or are we going to have a separate?
No, we'll do that, we will have that separate.
Yes, and it's my understanding that the superintendent will also participate in the process by. And would you elaborate on that and let, let the rest of the board members know that she, her responsibilities for evaluation.
Yes, so, so this, the superintendent in the superintendent's contract, I checked it from my file, the superintendent's contract. Allows for the superintendent to propose actually the evaluation. And it, the way it's stated is then we all try to reach consensus on that, the superintendent has proposed that in the five years she's been here and. We've pretty much gone with that every year. So for this, for this past year, for evaluating for this past year. We just, you know, she's okay with us evaluating the accomplishments from this past year and, and she'll be there to have discussion with us. We will then set goals for the 21, 22 school year, her evaluation, does that make sense? Yep.
So two things, one is how, who's the moderator going to be on the 17th and how is that chosen?
So we'll probably, I think we'll probably try and get somebody who revert, who has done other HR stuff. For us from Duane's Law Firm, if we can, um, that was, that was going to be my recommendation, is somebody like that.
And then the second thing is just logistical, I came up at the CGCS phone call last week. That it would probably be a good idea to include in our annual evaluation. That the superintendent provides documentation of her licensure and certification. Because it came up in a different district that it wasn't up to date. And I'm sure it's up to date, but it might just be good to have that part of the procedure.
Superintendent, yeah, takes care of that, there's a couple of other things in the contract, like she has to have had a physical and she doesn't, they, she's always done that. But we'll make sure that's in the document that we're using going forward. Okay, any other questions? Okay, we have, sorry, we have a motion on the floor in a second, so we can go ahead and vote. Can we, oh, we can vote electronically now? Okay, um, so that motion passes and I'm making myself a note, licensure, forgot that question. All right, the next item on the agenda under 7C is decision regarding governance training with the Council of Great City Schools. Do we have a motion for that? Okay, do we have a motion, do we have a second? All right, so now we can talk a little bit about, so this is, um, um. A motion for the consulting, the work, sorry, I'm hot and my glasses are foggy, so. With Great City Schools, does anybody want to talk about that? Eric Court, no. Who's seconded, Joyce? Dr. Frazier did, okay, Dr. Frazier did. I knew it was 12. Okay, so do we have any questions about that? All right, great, let's vote. I gotta find it. Yeah, I gotta get it down. Okay, so looks like that motion passes, oh, I could see. All right, next item is 7D, S or advisory team. Reverend Matt, do you want to just talk about that real quick?
Yes, so at our last board meeting, we talked about having an advisory committee to kind of oversee. Not oversee, but to work in conjunction with the order and finance committee. As far as the S of three funding is concerned, and. So we, we talked about this advisory team being consisted of five to seven committee members. With board members recommending at least one to two individuals to be selected to serve on that part. That advisory team will, will be responsible for reporting back to the board. Uh, as an, as an overseer from that, the actual arching committee, right? Uh, so, uh, so we have an opportunity to engage, as we were talking about earlier. Being transparent with the S or funding, and here's an opportunity for the board to participate by submitting names of individuals that they would like. To be considered in this five to seven member team.
So Reverend Matt, when will the board vote on these?
So it is due to Julie by the 13th, uh, I think we can, uh, I don't know how much time we do with you to research that.
Well, they have just due by the 13th, can it be on the next board agenda?
Um, it can be. Yep, it can, but it's for again, uh, the sooner the better, in my personal opinion. So, but we have an opportunity, uh, so it will be left up to you, board members, to submit those names by the 13th.
So, so we'll be more going to ask that question.
Okay, just so that we can be clear and that we can be correct according with our policy. Okay, uh, that, so I'm going to recommend that we create an, an ad hoc committee so that this can be done in, in accordance with our policy. Uh, so I entertain a motion for that, just so that we can be consistent.
So it's not ad hoc committees, we're committees of board members. This is an advisory committee of citizens.
I think they didn't have an ad hoc committee, this is like the, you know, the capital over that kind of a committee, although it's going to be smaller. I make a motion.
So we'll do it that way and then we'll, can we select the members to it at the next meeting then?
Yep, we'll, we'll have it on the next board meeting.
Okay, so I'm, I so made the motion, do we need a second to?
Is there any concerns that this is an information item, I have no concerns of that, I think the super majority of the board could. Yeah, because it was just telling us to bring the people, it wasn't creating the committee.
So why don't we do the?
Well, we have a special call meeting today, can we not?
Well.
Now, we'll.
I think we've all agreed that we're going to submit names, we've all agreed that we're going to create the committee, so while it. I, I think we're all in agreement with what you're doing, I don't think you have to stop and go back and form an ad hoc committee, we can keep moving forward.
Okay, all right, if all is in agreement with that, then it won't have to go to that ad act step. All right, we're good.
Okay, so we're sending names to Julie for that.
Yes, by the 13th, please.
By the 13th, okay.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is E, the board's Schools of Innovation Ad hoc Committee Appointment.
Yes.
Reverend Matt, you want to update that?
So originally Dr. French, Dr. Frazier in, uh, this hetero was. Was selected to serve on that committee, Dr. Frazier. It's not able to or have withdrawn her name from serving on that committee, so I'm going to replace, uh, Dr. Frazier with Ms. Waters to serve on that committee. For, with the, with Dr. French still continuing as the appointed chairperson.
Okay, all right, any questions about that? All right, item 7F, school visitation schedule, and you can see the schedule below. That's done for September and thanks to all those schools who are allowing, you know, open to the board so soon after school starts. Does anybody have any questions about those visits?
I guess we will monitor those as things happen to determine whether or not we still should, you know, as we. Get through the law and see whether the numbers are maybe increasing or not.
I was going to say, it seems kind of soon after school starts to start putting us in the buildings.
Well, so I think, I think we have, we have, you know, board members who have requested to go in and visit schools. So perhaps what we ought to do is we have this schedule and we all need to be flexible if. If numbers, COVID numbers are up and it's not prudent for us to be visiting schools, then we'll, then staff can, can let us know that. Does that work for you, Dr. Prestoy?
It does, the only thing I would mention is the first round of schools are some of the alternative schools. And we did have a request from multiple board members to take a look this year at. Whether our alternative programs are functioning as well as we wanted them to, so. If we can possibly make that first round of visits work, I think we should, if we can't, if it isn't safe for, for children and teachers to bring more visitors into the school. Maybe we could arrange to meet with those principals, just to make sure we understand how their programs work. I think all of us wish that we had more therapeutic options for the children whom we are not well-termed to serve. So with that, with that caveat, I, I would say absolutely, let's take a read on it week by week.
So I, I totally agree, if we, if we do, if we have to go to assuming whatever the case may be. But to not get away from the schedule, because it's important.
Okay, um, everybody good with that? All righty, so. The next item is, um, sorry, I'm switching to more. Looking at agenda items that'll go to the potential consent agenda for the board meeting. The Achieve Charleston will not, because it was not, it was not unanimous, so it'll go on the regular part of the agenda. And the ad hoc, okay, this is my bad, because I, I thought it's not on the special call meeting agenda. So. That superintendent's ad hoc.
We.
Situation, it's August 17th.
Right.
Yeah. Urgent matter, so.
Okay.
Why is it considered an emergency?
Another meeting other than this special call meeting before that time, so you have to agree to go forward.
So trying, trying to have us meet maybe like August 17th.
The motion is technically to agree to do this, and then if we wait until then, we'd have to, then after we agree, do it.
Gotcha.
I see what you're saying.
Okay, got it, okay, got it, we can do that.
So what was the vote coming, what was the?
It was unanimous. Okay, any closing items? We have a special call meeting right after this, so don't run away. Board meetings on August 23rd, and then you'll see the, um, meetings for September.
Well, should you put the August 17th meeting in there?
Yeah, I, I want to make sure that you, that, we'll email and make sure that day works for you guys. Okay, and so what time are we going to?
14.
14?
Nice price slip.
Majority of us would like to reconvene at 4:15.
All right, we will start exactly 4:15.
Thank you.
4:15 and 26 seconds should better be a good seat.
Absolutely. Oh, board members, please, we need to take a. Oh, board members, please, we need to take a. For a call, the August 9, 2021, vote of trustees, special call meeting to order, entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda and approval of the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to move item two G to the beginning of executive session, just time wise, and to add an item K for an out of county transfer in. We just received some information on a student that's been released from another county and we want to consider that since today, since our board meeting, since school starts next week and our board meeting is after that. And I'd like to add an item three E for us to take action on the superintendent's evaluation for 202021. Did I do that right? Sorry, sorry.
I apologize. Because we're moving something on the agenda for action item.
Yeah.
Things for an action item, could you just do that one differently separately?
Okay. Okay, all right, so take that back. I'd like to make a motion to move item G to be the first item on the executive session. And once we, after we vote on that, have a second motion.
There is a second.
So this is.
This is just to move.
I was gonna say, this is not a motion to approve the agenda, it's a motion to change the agenda.
Correct. So this is just to move item G to G to be the first item we discuss in executive session.
All right, all in favor, if I say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, Ms. Coakley and Ms. Heder.
Okay, who seconded that motion?
I did.
Kristin did. Then my second motion is I move that we approve the agenda and add item two K, an out of transfer in, and item three E, action on the superintendent's evaluation for 202021. As action items.
Second.
And just in case anybody missed, the reason we need to add item the in the executive session is we just recently gotten today, momentarily ago, got information from another county, they are releasing a student to be able to transfer in.
Okay, that was moved by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coates. Are there any questions? Mary, now Julie, are we voting like?
Yes.
Okay. I said you please pass your vote electronically.
Oh, it never came up.
Ms. Coakley.
It didn't come up.
Bad, my bad, my bad.
Do we need to add that item two four K as well?
I'm sorry?
Do we need to add the the item two K also to?
Yeah, that will be two K will be for the transfer, three E will be for the superintendent evaluation.
Right, but.
We have possible action on executive items after the executive session.
I'm sorry?
Do we need it on for on section four as well?
We got it.
Okay. Ms. Coakley, how do you vote?
Yay, but it never came up on my computer.
Good, a motion passes, entertain a motion going to executive session. All in favor, I know, but say an aye. If you're not a part of executive session, I said you please.
All right, thank you. All right, well now we convene into open session. Item 3B on the agenda, Policy Committee, ADD face covering. Is there a motion?
Sorry, I said I was ready.
All right, so what's the motion?
Item 3B, Policy Committee, Policy ADD face covering.
I have a motion to modify Policy ADD. The final sentence to read, "The board authorizes the superintendent or his or her designee to modify these requirements as necessary to meet health and safety guidelines and/or state law."
Proper move in second, move by Dr. French, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions?
So the only change is per whatever the per state law and state law.
Yes. All right.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
So Ms. Erickson needs to type it into the motion.
No problem. Spray him with some of that menopause stuff.
No, you won't.
That state law would include that, so we're just being generic. Ms. Pintney Rees wrote it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, prepare yourself to cast your vote.
Yeah, it's coming up.
While we're voting, Reverend Ma would...
In reference to item...
To ADD, I just would like to express that we do encourage face coverings even though we can't enforce that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Coakley, how do you vote? Ms. Coakley?
I, yeah, it wasn't trickery, lady.
Okay, that motion passes. Item 3C.
Move to approve the two proposed hearing officers.
Second.
Move by Ms. Coakley, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote.
Sorry, I've got four docs open in two places.
All right, that motion passes. Item 3D.
Move to approve, second.
Move by Dr. French, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Ms. Darby, are you waiting?
I got it. I did it first.
Okay, that motion passes. Item 4A. I'm sorry?
3E Superintendent Evaluation.
Yes, thank you. 3E Superintendent Evaluation. Is there a motion?
Second.
Move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Waters. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Okay, that motion passes. Now, item 4A.
I've got a motion. I'd like to recommend that the following students that we overturn the constituent board's decision. Number 38, 39, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 59, 60, 61, and 62.
Second.
Move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coles. Are there any questions?
Oh, yeah.
So let me read those numbers again.
Great.
38, 39, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 47, 48, 49, 50, 51, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 59, 60, 61, and 62.
Okay, that motion passes. Item 4B.
I've moved to refer to the student to the 504 team at the school for replacement consideration.
Second.
Move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coles. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Ms. Coakley? Thank you. That motion passes. Item 4C.
I move that we place the student at TPA.
Second.
Move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coles. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Okay, that motion passes. Item 4D.
I move that we allow the student to remain and waive tuition for students in 12th grade.
Second.
Move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Waters. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Okay, that motion passes. Item 4E.
I move that we allow the student to remain or be enrolled for fifth grade with tuition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coles. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Okay, that motion passes. Item 4F.
I move that we deny the request.
Second.
Move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coles. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. Okay, that motion passes. Item 4G.
Move for approval. She'll have to type out that hole. It should be in there.
Is there a second? Move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Green. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. What were you waiting on, Julie?
Oh, it didn't.
I'm sorry. Okay, great. All right, item, that motion passes. Item 4H.
Move to approve amending the MOU with the Charleston County Parks and Recreation Commission to allow the use of Building 54 along with the Lincoln Regional Center. Second.
Move by Ms. Coles, second by Ms. Green. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please cast your vote. That motion passes. Entertained motion for the jury.
We haven't, we've got to do the, that last, the last one. Yeah, we want to anyway. I move that we allow the student recently released from Colleton County to enroll at Jane Edwards Elementary.
Second.
Move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coles. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All done in favor nor by saying aye? Any opposes? Ayes have it, so is order. Entertained motion for the jury.
I will.
Entertained motion for the jury.
Move to a jury.